At five thirty-five, I will call the meeting to order. Could I please have a roll call?
Commissioner Brewer. Commissioner McDaniel. Commissioner McCowen.
Here.
Commissioner Jablonski. Commissioner Byrd.
Here.
Commissioner McClure. Commissioner Griffith.
Here.
Commissioner Kendall.
Here.
And Commissioner Parker.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Starting with our consent docket, item number one, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of the minutes as follow, planning commission meeting minutes of October ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. I would like to request to remove item number two from the consent items. Is there any other items commission wish to remove from the consent docket? Seeing none, I would take a motion on the remaining consent docket for item number one, the minutes.
Move to approve item one of the consent pack- packet.
Second.
And a vote.
I'm having to remove the people that aren't here. You may vote. All votes have been cast and it carries six to zero.
Moving to item number two, this item has a correction to the titling, changing two hundred and twenty-nine point nine-two feet to three hundred and twenty-nine point nine-two feet. Red together, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of COS dash two-five-two-six dash four, with a variance in the minimum width requirement measured at the front building setback from three hundred and thirty feet to three hundred and twenty-nine point nine-two feet for tracks one through four and a variance in the ten acres requirements from ten acres to nine point nine-eight-zero acres. Consideration of Norman Rule Certificate of Survey submitted by twenty-five dash Norman dash forty LLC Golden Land Surveying for Blandford Bluff for thirty-nine point nine-four-seven acres of property generally located on the east side of Ninety-sixth Avenue Northeast and one quarter of a mile north of Bethel Road, Ward Five. Are there any presentations from staff that they'd like to make? I know this was on consent docket prior. Seeing none, and any applicant comments? Seeing none, I would just add a comment that we took it from consent docket to make that title change. Are there any other discussion by commission? Or comment from public? Seeing none, I would take a motion.
Move to approve item two with the typo correction.
Second.
And a vote?
You may vote. All votes have been cast and it carries six to zero.
Moving to item number three, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance O dash two-five-two-six dash one-four and ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending section thirty-six dash two oh one of the code of the City of Norman so as to remove part of the northeast corridor of section six, township eight, north range two, west to Norman, from the R-one single-family dwelling district and place the same in spud simple plan unit development and providing for the severability thereof. Eleven oh seven and eleven eleven South Chautauqua Avenue, Ward Seven. And we would take a staff presentation.
Hello, Justin Fidget, the planning department. As said, the developer is proposing a three-story microunit apartment building with twenty-four units. The site will feature a parking area of approximately twenty-one parking spots and five bicycle racks for the residents. To achieve this design, the applicant has requested to rezone the R-one single-family dwelling district to S P U D simple plan unit development. These are the existing zonings. The property is currently zoned R-one and abuts R-three to the east and south, has R-one zoned properties across the street, Chautauqua Avenue to the west. Here is the AIM future land use designation. Existing land uses. A two thousand and twenty-three aerial photograph. And a location map of the site. This is the development site itself. Staff did receive a protest for this development. The protest map that was submitted to the city, however, only had, we only had enough information available to verify one of the protests we submitted, so that is the one you are seeing on the map presented here with a protest of three point four percent of the notification area. The proposed development is consistent with the AIM Norman Commerce and Land Use Plan because it proposes connections to the city utilities, encouragement of multimodal transportation methods, and residential structures with a gross density greater than eight units per acre. However, the development is inconsistent in that it proposes setbacks that are not typically found in the surrounding zoning districts. Staff forces request a planning commission for consideration and recommendation to city council. The applicant is present and has a presentation for the planning commission.
Thank you. Any question by commissioners of staff?
Can you clarify for me the property just to the north? Is that R-one, R-three? In a protest letter, it was referenced to something different than what it was called out. I just wanted to clarify.
Directly north is R-one, single-family.
Thanks.
Any other questions by commission for staff?
I did have a question. You mentioned that there was not enough information to include other protests potentially, that that was the only one included on the map. What exactly was the information missing that didn't allow that to be included?
That would be verification of the signatures collected. That they were from the actual property owners and that they were collected on behalf of the property owners.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, I would take the applicant's presentation.
Good evening, commissioners. Matt Peacock with Peacock Design here representing the applicant. Let's see here. Okay, so this, before I get into the slides, I'll just say that effectively this is the same project you guys saw in October. We did take time to meet with the neighbors on October, on November sixth. Feedback was, you know, very positive. Said that they appreciated meeting, that my comments made them feel better about the project, but they still wanted to oppose it. And I informed them that that was absolutely their right and I respected their ability to do so. And so, we really tried to find a common ground compromise. There wasn't much to, not much common ground to find. So that is why you're seeing the site, and I'm going to go in through why I think this project is appropriate for the proposed site. So, I know you commissioners know what AIM Norman is, but for everybody in the audience, AIM Norman was the comprehensive planning effort the City of Norman undertook over the past two and a half years. We, the City of Norman explored land use, housing, stormwater, transportation, parks, wastewater and water, and did revise all of the plans to work together with each other. Like I said, those are two and a half year citizen-driven process. There was monthly surveys, pop-up events, media spotlights, neighborhood workshops. This plan was formed by community engagement and feedback. It was very much a bottom-up, organic, citizen-led approach to city planning. This plan was by Norman residents saying this is how they wanted Norman to develop over the next twenty years. And so, why I bring that up is because you'll see on the screen, to the east of Chautauqua is urban medium. That is the side of the street that our project is on. As you can see, nearly all the parcels in that area are of a density nature. They're R-two, R-three, R-M-six, all multifamily projects. You'll see by contrast, west of Chautauqua, that everything is urban light. That's the classification, AIM twenty-five, forty-five is urban light. And basically, everything you see in the cream color, that is all R-one zoning. I didn't label it just so you could kind of see what was R-one and easily differentiate between the rest of it. But as you can see, to the east of Chautauqua, it's very much a dense mix. If you zoom out a little further, this goes all the way from Boyd Street to Timberdale, which is essentially Lloyd Noble. You can see urban medium to the east of Chautauqua, urban light to the west, very much a dense housing pattern. R-three, R-two, R-M-six. There's a lot of fraternity and sorority houses here, a lot of student housing developments, just a lot of multifamily projects. And so, we feel that, you know, it's really consistent with that. And in fact, if you look up in the upper right, sixty-three of the sixty-seven lots from Boyd to Timberdale are already rezoned, R-two, R-three, R-M-six. And I know in the last meeting, there were some comments from the people protesting that this project was going to set a precedent for redevelopment along Chautauqua there. And I'd argue the precedent has already been set and that urban medium dense housing is actually what is not only built already, but what has been desired by our community. Just to talk a little bit more about the urban medium designation, you can see on the screen that it says, you know, gross densities, any single development should be greater than eight units per acre. Three-story buildings are common. Developments may go up to four stories when located along an arterial street. Higher intensity multi-unit residential housing would be allowed when parcels are located along and with direct access to an arterial street. I think this next point is very important to this project, is parking is secondary to the movement of people and visibility of destinations. We underparked this project by three spaces. We've got twenty-four units, twenty-one parking spaces, but we felt like this is very much in line with AIM twenty forty-five. You can see in AIM twenty forty-five, Chautauqua Avenue is actually classified as a minor arterial urban street. So, these provisions that say developments may go up to four stories when located in an arterial, we feel like we're very much in line with that. And why is all this important? Well, you, planning commission, on May eighth of this year unanimously adopted the land use plan, the transportation plan, and the housing plan. All three of these plans call for the type of dense walkable multi-unit developments proposed in this item tonight. And so, again, we feel like we are very much in line with AIM twenty forty-five. Here is the proposed site. The image on the right shows the two existing houses, eleven oh seven and eleven eleven Chautauqua. You can see to the left of those two houses is a pretty large-scale multi-unit project already in existence. Here is the site plan. You can see it's got, again, twenty-one parking spaces, five bike racks. Really trying to promote the park-wants-walk mentality or park-not-at-all and forego a car in favor of an e-bike or just being able to walk, you know, being in this area of the city. The reason I bring up this image is because there were some complaints last time from the protesters that we were going to create a negative parking condition on Hoover Street. That the three cars that we were not able to park on our site, we're going to, you know, create a really undesirable condition for the residents on Hoover Street. The images you see on the right, it's kind of hard to tell, but on the upper one, there is a no parking on that side of the street sign already. And the bottom sign, there is also a no parking sign on that side of the street as well. And I actually committed to the neighbors that if they wanted to petition the city to remove the parking on either side of the street, I would absolutely help them do that. I know that was a sticking point for them and so, want to try to address their concerns where we're able. And I feel like this is an area where we could actually find some common ground. The unit plans, you'll see these are three hundred and thirty square foot microunits. They are one-bed, very efficiency units. You see each one has its own kitchen, its own bath, its own laundry facility. The renderings on the right show that it's a very efficient, minimalist layout. There's not a lot to it. That's very much by design. And we heard a lot of complaints last time about how this was going to be a student project, but I really wanted to talk to you about why it's not a student project. We've been very much intentional about this and you can read it, but I'll summarize it here. Basically, if we wanted to do a student using, a student housing project and we wanted to build twenty-four units, it would be much easier for us to do six four-bedroom units. That would equal twenty-four units. And in that situation, we would have six kitchens, six laundry setups, and six bathrooms. But as you can see, we're going through a lot of extra effort and a lot of extra cost to build twenty-four kitchens, twenty-four laundry setups, twenty-four bathrooms. And we are doing everything we can to make this a self-sufficient unit geared towards young professionals. The person that would be living in this unit would be somebody who has outgrown student life, outgrown roommates, not yet ready to set down roots in the suburbs, kind of in that little missing zone, middle zone. That type of housing is often called missing middle because it fits in between the large-scale apartment complexes and the single-family zoning. So, City of Norman has had a really hard time keeping young professionals in town. We have an endless supply of them that graduate from the university, but the main reason I hear that we don't attract them is a lack of suitable housing options. And so, again, we're very much intentional about this project not being a student housing development, really trying to make something that's unique and something that Norman doesn't offer currently in its stock of housing options. So, this is the exterior rendering with the project will look like. Again, trying to go with a very collegiate feel, trying to go with something that fits in the neighborhood. We feel that it's got adequate light, day lighting, proper materials. It fits the neighborhood scale. As I had told you earlier, everything around this is already, you know, basically allowed to go three stories by right. So, we feel much we're very in line with that. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions by commission of the applicant?
Question. Just wanted to confirm from the map that the zoning is R-one, but the land use from the AIM Norman plan is the urban medium.
Yes, sir.
On this side?
Yes.
Okay.
And you can see that even though this is R-one, so that's the light cream-colored parcels, you see three of them on the screen and everything else is R-two, R-three. So, with R-three, you can go up to three stories by right. I know most of those R-three projects have over a hundred units in them. So, again, we don't think that we are setting a precedent. We feel the precedent has already been set and we are just leaning into it.
And also wanted to confirm, you said you're underparked by three spaces. How many parking spaces are there?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. So, it's twenty-one, twenty-four units.
Yes. And we have been exploring off-site parking arrangements. We've been in contact with OU, several of the churches that are in this area. It's been tough sledding. I won't lie about that. I haven't given up hope on it. I have a couple more leads that I think yield some positive results, but it's been a challenge up until this point.
To find.
Find off-site parking spaces.
Off-site parking.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kendall?
That was my question was a follow-up on your comment about off-site last time, so.
Any other questions by commission of the applicant? Okay, seeing none, I would move to audience comments. Do, we do have a card up here for a Maggie Kaufman. And just a reminder, if you will please state your name and address into the microphone when you get started. If you want a thirty-second warning, let me know. Otherwise, I'll yield the full three minutes to you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. My name is Maggie Kaufman and I live at seven twenty-five Hoover Street. I wrote these thoughts down this morning and it really explains the personal feelings that my husband and I have about this project. Charming. The Hoover and Chautauqua neighborhood is the perfect juxtaposition between Norman life and student life. West of Chautauqua, you have an established old Norman neighborhood full of family life, juxtaposed with the energy and vitality of campus life. East of Chautauqua, you have the fun and energy of student life, quaint and charming with their porch decorations on game day and their holiday decorations as witnessed last night right in this area. and their holiday decorations, as witnessed last night, right in this area. On the cute homes, uh, right there, near the ones to be destroyed. That's where we live, that's where we choose to live, that's where we choose and chose to raise our children, and choose to enjoy the rest of our days. The proposed property will at least triple the amount of people in that very footprint, and will most likely quadruple it. With the amount of trap, with it, the amount of traffic will be quadrupled. The cars will be quadrupled, and noise will be quadrupled. And the gu- view goes from the quaint to the garish. The only concession, if you can call it that, given to the neighborhood residents is making Hoover no parking. That is not something we want. Remember, this is our neighborhood, this is our home, this is where we welcome our family. We welcome our kids home and play with our grandkids, and welcome family on holidays. Where do you suppose our guests park? Does someone valet our 93-year-old mother to the front door and go park a street over? This is our home, this is our life. Don't destroy the beauty and charm of living near campus because of greed. Just because you can do something, doesn't mean you should. Thank you for giving me the time.
Thank you. Are there any other audience comments? Seeing none, I would move to Planning Commission discussion.
With the AIM Norman plan still being really fresh and getting used to this transition, could I ask clarification on, um, he did a great job of outlining some key points on medium density? But, um, I'm just curious, with the 24 units, is it really medium density, or is it closer to high density? Can I look at those same bullets? Um, normally I have my computer, but I don't today.
One moment.
So, within, within AIM Norman, um, under urban high, that's what you're referencing, correct? Uh, gross densities in any single development should be greater than 12 units per acre.
Okay. And how many acres is this?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Uh, Commissioner Kendall, to, same question, I think, but to clarify it, does this conform with urban den- urban medium? Like, is that the question?
Yeah, I, I feel like there are some bullet points, it does tick some boxes. But my concern is with the number of units, that it, it's ticking some high-density boxes as well. Um, and so, which is it really? Is it a high-density project with the name of medium? Or is it truly medium density?
So, within AIM, as it was adopted, it specifically says in the urban medium, gross densities in any single development should be greater than eight units. So, it's, doesn't have a cap, and within this area, we expect an increase in density. I mean, that was the whole goal.
Right.
Could I add something to that?
Yeah.
Real quick, um, I will say that, uh, again, 24 units, we could slice that up into eight three-bedroom units. And so, I think the fact that we are deciding to go with smaller bedrooms and smaller units, yes, that's going to yield a larger unit count, but I'd say that it's still relative to an eight-unit, three developer, three-bedroom project. And so, understand the logic, I definitely understand where you're coming from. But I think if we came as a 24 unit that was in the configuration I just described, it would be more in line with what we're just, what we're talking about in the plan. And so, I don't think the two are that far off.
Okay.
Thank you.
Laura Hoggitt with the Planning Department. Um, so another thing that we look at when we are evaluating it is the height. So, urban medium calls for three to five-story buildings, and urban high would start at four. So, uh, urban high is really like your large-scale apartment complexes. So, if that helps.
Yes.
Uh, just clarifying, I'm seeing building types are in urban medium, two and three-story, and urban high, three and, three to five, for comparison. So, a three-story building potentially fits in either.
In either, yeah.
And I think that's also by design for tapering, without speaking on behalf of the AIM program. I think we have another member of the audience that'd like to come up. Would you mind coming to the microphone and then just state your name and your address, and I'll give you three minutes? Thank you.
I'm David Harper. I live at 444 Chautauqua. I've lived there for 40 years. When, um, Linda Price knocked on my door and talked to me about developing a historic district, at, at the time, I was a little concerned about so many, um, new things we'd have to adhere to. Now, I wish we'd adhere to those. And I have a question. Why do you think that they came up with the three, uh, people, no more than three people who aren't, um, related? Well, it was the other side of what we're doing tonight. We didn't want these old houses turned into rental properties. No, let me, let me correct that. Um, my neighbors, uh, to my, to the north of me, rent, they're two adults. They've been there for five years. They're going to stay there until they can find a property they can afford in the historic district because they, they love it here. They're from California, so they like Norman a lot. So, when we're thinking about 12 people who aren't related, I ask you to think about, why did we come up with the three people who aren't related? It was for a reason, and now we're going to destroy it at the wrong vote. I don't want you to raise your hands, but when I heard about this, I thought, where did that come from? So, don't raise your hands, but I wonder if any of you have a real estate license? You know? If so, I hope you'll listen to those of us who live there and have lived there for a long time. I'm going to live there till I die. But right now, Chautauqua, I'm sorry. It's turned into a, a speed zone. At the exact time right now, it's, uh, closed at Berry, I mean, uh, Boyd. So, it's not as bad. But I worry about, let me back up a second. I live on the corner of Chautauqua and Juniper. My, uh, entrance from, from my cars to the road is on Juniper. Juniper doesn't have much traffic. But I think about my neighbors who live on Chautauqua and have to back out into the speed zone it's become. And now I think about-
Thank you very much for your comments, that your time is up. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. That's the end of your time.
Okay, I hope you-
I don't want to disrupt, I do want to give everybody who would like to make a comment an opportunity, but not to disrupt the flow of the remainder of our meeting. We actually did close our public comments section. Are there any other public comments on this item that would like to come forward now? I won't be hearing other public comments for this item.
Am I allowed to address this as a councilman?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
Robert Bruce, I live at 5209 Lion Drive here in Norman. And so, when I think about this particular change in zoning, I think about property rights. And if I had invested my time and my money into an R1 area, uh, whether it be five years ago, 10, or 30 years ago, and there's a, a, a submittal to the Planning Committee about changing the order inside, I'd be, well, hey, I bought into this neighborhood when it was R1. And now it's changing to something else. And my quiet enjoyment of that property has changed from when I bought into that neighborhood. So, I want people to think about, hey, I'm changing someone's life that bought in, you know, when you save for a house, it might take you years and years and years to finally get there to put that down payment. Then you finally have your, have your house, you pay it off. Then all of a sudden, the environment changes around you. So, I think you need to get some consideration of that before you make your next decision on that particular property rezoning. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Are there any other audience comments on this item? Uh, seeing none, I'd like to return to Planning Commission discussion. And our items there. Uh, we addressed the question about the stories. Are there any other discussion items or questions of the applicant or staff by commission?
Um, yeah, I, uh, appreciated Commissioner Kendall's question. Um, I think that was an important, um, thing to clarify and discuss to some extent. Um, the clarification from staff with the, I, with the four stories and heard conflicting information with the two to three, and then three to five. Um, I, when I look at this application, I think about the purview of our commission. The purview of our commission is, is it in compliance with the land use plan, which is AIM Norman? And, um, and we just adopted this plan. Uh, and it is urban medium. In my opinion, it is in conformance. Um, I could give my opinion on the project. But it is in conformance. And, and there, and, and through the process of adopting AIM Norman, um, there was also an opportunity for neighbors to weigh in. A very extended process, very comprehensive in nature, to research and address what the definitions of these different land uses are. Um, and this was, this is what was adopted. Just a couple notes on the project. I, I really actually like that it's, I really like that it's micro units. I think that's a really good point, that it could be eight four-unit. Yeah, eight four-bedroom, or four-bed units. Um, I, I actually think that this could be some great student housing, uh, but the, the right kind of student housing that you would want in a neighborhood. Um, single unit, uh, or sorry, single-bed units are very attractive, in my opinion, um, from a neighborly perspective, in that who's going to have a party in a micro unit? Nobody's going to do that. It's not a fun party to be at. Um, it's, uh, I think it's going to be a pretty great option for graduate students who want a cri- quieter environment, um, for, um, students who maybe are in their upper years, upperclassmen, who are a little more focused and kind of maybe out of the party stage, if you will. Um, and the reality is, we have a, we have a housing shortage, um, and we need more units. And, um, a- and if I was a neighbor and I had the choice between eight four-bedroom units or 24 single unit, single-bedroom units, those 24 single-bedroom units, I would choose all day long. Um, and because it's in conformance with the, with the land use plan, and they have the option of doing the other one, um, it's, uh, I, I think I'd be careful what you, um, wish for. Um, and, and, and just addressing the comment about, uh, buying into, um, buying into a neighborhood, um, I, 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 I hear that, um, at the same time, we have a housing shortage. And we're, and change is hard, and it's going to be hard, um, to see this change in density over time. But it's necessary, um, and the, for better or worse, um, neighborhoods that are close to campus, um, are going to be the highest, they're going to be the most attractive areas for higher densities. Um, and this is coming from somebody who lives four blocks west of campus. Um, and so, uh, four blocks west, uh, four blocks away, I don't know where I live. Um, close to campus, and sees, seeing a lot of this happen personally. Um, and so, uh, I, I actually think from a quiet enjoyment standpoint, 24 micro units is pretty, it's pretty, it's going to be pretty good. Um, I, I actually agreed with the comment from the neighbor who pointed out that they don't want to get rid of on-street parking. I'm a huge proponent of on-street parking. It makes streets safer, it gives people options. Um, and this area, you want to keep as safe as possible, you want as many cars parked on your street as possible. Um, I am very glad on my street on Laoma that we have on-street parking, otherwise it would be a speed zone. So, I, I'm not, uh, this is, again, not our purview, but I, I, I appreciate that that was a concession. I actually think it would be, um, uh, I, I like that there is on-street parking available, and I think it's great, uh, great for compatibility with this project itself, so. Um, but again, going back to the purview, I think that it seems pretty straightforward to me, so.
I personally, I, I like the single units. There's a lot about this project that I really like. I don't think that the number of units, in my opinion, and my interpretation, and we'll have to vote on, you know, our own personal interpretation of is this medium or is it high? I feel like it is more towards the high. Um, being on the border of an urban light and an urban medium, I, I don't know that the very first project to convert that area into urban medium should be going to the very top level of maximizing as much as it can in that space. I don't, I personally don't feel that that is meeting the spirit of, of how I view what that area is supposed to be developing into. Um, I would be jumping up and down for 12, 16, maybe even 18. But, um, beyond that, I, I feel like it is putting high urban density into an medium urban density area. Um, those are, those are just my thoughts. There's, there's, there's a lot I like about this project, and there are some things that I don't. And, and I think the responsibility of, of viewing each project, especially with these newly adopted, the newly adopted vision for where Norman is going, that it, it needs to be as thoughtful as possible. Um, I mean, we are in the sooner area, but I don't want it to be a, a land rush that, um, creates ongoing conflict. I want Norman to, because it was involving a lot of feedback. And I believe, truthfully, there were people that perceive that urban medium different than, than your interpretation with this particular project. So, I, I think that, um, especially as we start, and especially as we're looking at those areas where it's a big change, and it's, um, where two different development plans meet, we have to look at how those areas, the differences between those, how they can marry each other and blend and transition into each other, and not be an abrupt maximum of what medium allows. Um, and in my opinion, it's high and not medium. Um, but that could be potato, potato. Anyway, those are, those are my opinions. But yes, I think single would, uh, the single micro units would be great. That's actually what I had in Tacoma, and, um, I grew up in Washington State in college, and- and it had, and met all my needs. And it meant it was very quiet to study. You didn't have to worry about there being a party above you, to the left of you, to the right of you. You were able to get things done. So I do think there will be people really excited for this package. I personally would just like it to have been appropriately sized for medium.
Can I make a follow-up comment there? So, the challenge we're going to be dealing with as a community with marrying a housing shortage and not maximizing units is, everything has to do with the cost of construction. And during our presentation, we heard that each of these will have, you know, individual bathrooms and other amenities that in an eight-unit, four-bedroom property, you would not have the same costs. And so, I can't claim to know exactly what the pro forma on this looks like from a, from a financial perspective, but my speculation is that if you reduce the number of units, you are not going to be able to make this project work. And therefore, to make it work, you have to cut out bathrooms, which then turns it into more of a student housing dorm-style project. And, and so, I, that's more of a common, I don't, I mean, I'm not disagreeing with the idea of 24 units, like the, I think it's okay personally, but I get why there would be hesitation there. This is more to, how do we marry increasing the unit count in our city as a whole, and allowing for densities while also allowing for projects that actually can work? It, it's, it's a challenge. I mean, it is a huge challenge. And this is something that I have studied intensely with small lot development. We just had a, hosted a, we are hosting a group incremental development alliance through the city of Norman that is, that is directly addressing, trying to address these challenges. And, and, and so, it kind of, that kind of goes to like my, be careful what you wish for, because if you reduce the unit count, then you're going to have to cut out things that then turns into higher bedroom units, as I said. And, and it's, would you rather have 24 singles or 16 four-bedrooms that could create a lot more disruption to the neighborhood? You know, so I, it's, it's a challenge. And I, and again, it's going to be, it's going to be a hard, it's going to create conflict. There's no doubt. Because, because this is going to be something that we're going to see a lot of. I don't know, you know, I can't say whether it's going to be a land rush or not, but we're going to see a lot of change here soon. And we're going to have a lot of these discussions. And so, it's kind of like, if, in someone's mind, it might be pick your poison, if this isn't something you like one way or another, so.
Is there any other commission discussion? Particularly prior to making any motions? Seeing none, I would take a motion.
I'll move to, I was stucking.
Is there any other discussion on the motion by commission? Seeing none, I would take a vote.
You may vote.
Yes, I did. Oh, I thought I'd.
All votes have been cast, and it carries six to one.
Moving on to item number four, consideration of adoption rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance O-2526-16, an ordinance of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, amending section 20-109 to add massage therapy establishment to the fee schedule for licenses, amending section 20-202 to clarify definition of adult entertainment business, adding definitions and licensure requirements for massage therapy establishments to chapter 20, and deleting the definition of massage parlor and sexual encounter center from section 36-101 of the code of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, and providing for the severability thereof, we would take the staff presentation.
Thank you. Catherine Walker with the city legal department. This ordinance came about at the request of the police department after noticing an uptick in certain establishments opening in Norman that purported to offer massage therapy, but were instead really a cover for prostitution, human trafficking, and drug trafficking, as well as other crimes. The police look through data every day, every week at least, for the type of ads that are put out there for these places. And just on average, over 100 of massage parlor ads for locations in Norman appear on known prostitution websites each month. State law licenses massage therapists, but leaves open the possibility for cities to license massage therapy establishments. Without a licensing structure, it's more challenging to identify which establishment is legitimate and which is not. The ability of the city to regulate these establishments actually came about quite recently with the passage of Senate Bill 644, which became effective November 1st, which allows us to implement these licensing requirements and was passed explicitly to address human trafficking and the things that are going on in these illegal establishments. This ordinance creates a licensing requirement for the establishments, and then the reason why we're at planning commission, it also established, or eliminates problematic and outdated zoning ordinance language. I'll go quickly through the license requirements so we can get to the zoning ordinance piece. But essentially, beginning April 1st, all massage therapy establishments would be required to be licensed. We're going to be looking at the background of applicants for these establishments. Do they have related felonies, you know, crimes dealing with force, violence, sexual misconduct, drugs or weapons? Do they knowingly make false or misleading statements in their application? Have they had a license revoked in another city or by a state agency in the last five years? And the reason that's in there is commonly, we'll see establishments open in Oklahoma City. They might get caught there operating these human trafficking operations. Well, they'll just open up in Norman, or in Noble, or somewhere else. And so that's one of the reasons why we're looking at that. And of course, no license if the applicant is under 18 years of age. They have to meet certain requirements or face license revocation or criminal prosecution. There are requirements in there regarding sanitary practices, posting prices, making sure that a registry of employed massage therapists who work there are, is kept up to date at all times. Unlicensed massage therapists would not be able to provide massage therapy at these establishments. They're wearing appropriate clothing, limiting the operating hours to 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., looking to make sure their advertising is not misleading. No minors can work or receive services there without the written consent of a parent or legal guardian or their presence. No alcoholic beverages without an AB license, no indecent conduct. And then massages that are not fully clothed will be provided behind cubicles or booths for privacy purposes. The reason we're here is, is as I was drafting this ordinance, I thought I better search the code to see if massage parlors anywhere else in the code. And it was. It was in the definition of adult entertainment uses. This is a definition that has not been updated since the 1980s. We don't have any licensed adult entertainment uses currently, but they could be possibly allowed in certain zoning districts with the grant of a special use. Included in the definition of adult entertainment uses are definitions for massage parlors and sexual encounter centers, which are basically the payment of consideration or gratuity in exchange for some type of sexual contact, and this sounds a lot like prostitution. It really runs afoul of our criminal statutes that criminalize those activities. We don't have any existing licenses, as I said, so we want to strike those two terms and their definitions from the zoning ordinance to make sure that if there was a request for an applicant, or a license or special use at some point in the future, we're not doing anything that runs afoul of state law. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other commissioners that would like to ask questions of staff? I will, I have some, but I'd like to save mine to the end in case I have any duplication, so.
I may be taking one of yours, because you kind of fed it to me. But I, was this, I, this is not coming from, I think these are all great updates, but was this run by any existing above-board massage therapists in the city for their feedback?
We have not met with any existing massage therapy establishments in Norman. I will tell you that when we drafted this ordinance, we looked closely at Lawton, Moore, and Oklahoma City, who all have very similar ordinances in place. I did see that you all received a couple of emails today, and I'm happy to reach out to them to talk through this. I don't think there's going to be any negative impact to a legitimate organization or establishment. Certainly, we want to do education and make sure they know about the licensing requirements and things like that. And that's why we're not even making that effective until April 1st.
So I have a particular question as to exactly what the purview of our vote is. So, you had some licensing requirements that you identified in here, but from what I was reading, we were only looking at specifically the zoning code amendments. Can you please clarify what we are doing here today? And if somebody has concerns about how their licensing is going to be impacted, what is the appropriate avenue that they can take to be heard and make sure that they have a chance to meet before anything is enacted?
Yeah. We weren't able to get on the council agenda before coming to planning commission, but we do have a council meeting scheduled to discuss this with council members on December 2nd. So I would encourage establishments to keep an eye out for that. They could reach out to me anytime, and I'm happy to talk to them about it. The reason we're here before the planning commission is just that section of the ordinance that deletes the two definitions, or subdefinitions, from the adult entertainment uses definition in the zoning ordinance. And that's really why we had to come to planning commission, is because of those provisions.
Okay. I similarly would express some concerns about putting some language in that's affecting some of those particularly licensed individuals without having communication as to the drafting of it, especially now that that's a known concern. So I would really like to see that meeting held. And just again, clarifying, our role is just the explicitly defined deleting massage parlors and sexual encounter centers from the adult entertainment use section. Is there any other questions for staff?
Just one quick comment. I noticed in some of the, the language, it was very gender-specific in some places, so I would just review that and make sure that we'll, whatever's final, put forward.
Thank you. And although it was not specifically part of what we will be voting on, the comment about appropriate clothing, I think that's something that could probably warrant some thought.
Any other questions of staff or comments for staff? Seeing none, I would move to, I guess we had, that was our applicant, so audience comments. I have a Mary Elizabeth LeBlanc. Just a reminder, if you will please state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Mary Elizabeth LeBlanc, 1630 Surrey Drive, here in Norman. I have great concern over this, whether you guys are voting specifically to what she's proposing, but the city proposing and speaking to law enforcement without involving massage therapists in how to go forward in establishment licensing of our businesses. I am a massage therapist. I am a member of the AMTA Oklahoma Chapter. I am the GR Chair, and I am the one who worked with Senator Sykes and our lobbyists to gain professional licensing for our profession. Law enforcement comes at us the wrong way. I understand their problems with illicit businesses. Their problem is not with massage therapy, and going for more regulation against us is not the answer. So I would like everybody to be very cognitive of how they engage with their language. I appreciate that you are trying to eliminate the term massage parlors from ordinances. We don't need to have that language being used. The bill that I looked over today has very, very many problems with the language, stating no work on the buttocks. I had a client last week who came to me because his doctor said, I can't do anything for you, it's your piriformis. If you don't know your anatomy, the piriformis is the smallest muscle deep in the buttocks. I can't address the piriformis if this law goes through. So, I just want to make sure law enforcement and the city knows they need to speak to massage therapists. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kaylee Winchester.
Hi, Kaylee Winchester, 1228 Columbia Court. I am a licensed massage therapist. I've been licensed for 15 years. 13 of those have been in Oklahoma, and I only say that because I continue to hold my professional license from the state of Oregon, which was the second strictest state for requirements to call yourself a massage therapist at the time, until 2016, whenever I was able to get an Oklahoma state license, and then I held both. I also have worked in various settings throughout Norman as a professional massage therapist, including medical clinics, spas, alongside chiropractors, and even doing traveling work or chair massage. So, there are many, many therapists in town, my peers, who are trained and licensed and professional and have a high bar for operation and ethics. I own currently a multi-practitioner wellness clinic called Udlaw on Main Street. I have five other massage therapists that work with me there, and we are all licensed, insured, clean people. And I have problems with the language in this. I was only made aware of this, this morning. And after reading through it, I have some concerns. First of all, when they changed the language to say that we could go back to relating to zoning or licensing requirements for business locations offering massage therapy. There is not a whole lot going on in here that I feel like is zoning and licensing-related that is not probably already covered by our state individual licenses as practitioners. The problem kind of gets dicey whenever, well, it's confusing whenever you have massage therapists who are working underneath the supervision of a doctor, massage therapists who are working under the supervision of a nurse, or in the same office as any of those things. We're already being inspected by their professional boards. If we have an esthetician or any other cosmetologist in-house, which I do, I also get inspected by the cosmetology board for our establishment. We have an establishment license already with the cosmetology board. The exceptions that are outlined in here would create a whole lot of, like, easy ways for the people who are working in illicit parlors. And we do, in this business, now consider parlor to be kind of one of those words that we don't use. It's cringe. We tell our clients, we try to educate them, that we are no longer, that we're not a masseuse. We are a massage therapist. We are a trained allied health professional who is willing to help you with your pain and work with your other healthcare providers to...
That's the end of your time. Thank you very much for your comments. Are there any other people that like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I would move to planning commission discussion.
I definitely agree that we need to remove massage parlor and sexual encounter centers from, from our ordinances. As far as adding additional verbiage, is there a reason that we're trying to add layers since there is state law in place already?
Is that a question for the city?
Is that a question for the city attorney?
Yes.
It's really an enforcement mechanism that gives our police an opportunity to go into the illegitimate establishments and shut them down. So licensing requirement, if you don't have a license, or if you have a license and you're violating it, allows the city to come in and inspect the premises and shut that kind of behavior down. So it gives us an additional enforcement mechanism. In addition to license revocation, we can charge criminal charges in municipal court. At the state level, they really regulate massage therapists more than establishments. And so we had some old, some ordinances from other cities where they once tried to or did regulate establishments until the law to requirement licensing of massage therapists was passed, hasn't been around as long as you might think. And then that law restricted us to zoning only. So the law recently changed again to allow licensing, and so the police approached us about incorporating that into our code to be able to have just another mechanism to enforce the requirements against the illegitimate establishments.
It sounded like we had some very qualified individuals in here that would be happy to discuss verbiage.
Yeah.
So I don't know if you're open to organizing that between now and, I guess, read at council?
It won't go to council for second reading, I don't think, until January. So we've got some time to kind of assemble a group. I get a massage every two weeks, so I have someone I can bring into that conversation as well and talk about ways that it might be modified. I know the first woman that spoke, that's an easy fix that I think we can address in the ordinance with the simple elimination of one word. So I think there are things in here that if they need to be modified or clarified, that we can do that pretty easily before it goes to council.
Commissioner McClure, did you also have a comment?
I had a question for the first therapist that spoke. I've been an athlete my whole life. I've had a therapist or an athletic trainer get into the piriformis. There's nothing sexual about that. Why did you say that if this passed, you would not be able to work on a piriformis?
The language that's written in there, it specifically states what you cannot do in working on the buttocks, and that's the way it's written in the language.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
So if I can't work on the buttocks, I can't work on the piriformis.
No. Some people would like keeping your elbow away from it.
I'll just make a simple comment. It sounds like with our purview, it's elimination of the language that, I'm fully in support of that. There's work that needs to be done on the other language, but that sounds like the center of the council level, so. I don't know if I could make a motion, but I would make a motion to approve.
Are there any other discussion on this item before we have a motion?
Maybe more, you know, professional licensed massage therapists. There's other types of massages, so like Thai bodywork and stuff. I don't know how they're regulated with the state boards, but that would be something that, because my understanding is that they're not regulated as much as a massage therapist is, and I'm...
That would be correct.
Okay.
Unfortunately, in the language that we did, our parent organization, our national organization exempted a lot of modalities because they didn't want them coming forward and fighting our bill. We didn't want our bill to be killed because of people who don't see themselves as massage therapists, but other types of bodyworkers.
Yeah.
They're not. And Thai body massages is a legitimate thing, but unfortunately, with areas being those that want to work outside of that, we'll find a way to work outside of that and include illicit things.
Right, yeah, so we're, you know, in the mode of, you know, a lock only keeps an honest person out. So I would just say when we're doing that, just make sure we're all encompassing of, I don't know how to word that, Catherine, but just as note.
Any other commission discussion before a motion? And if none, then I would take a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
And a vote.
You may vote. All votes have been cast.
Moving on to items number five and six. Item number five, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance O-2526-19, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending Section 36-201 of the Code of the City of Norman so as to remove that part of the southwest quarter of Section 15, Township 8 North, Range 2 West, and the east half of Section 16, Township 8 North, Range 2 West of the Indian Meridian to Norman, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, from a PUD planned unit development and place the same in a PUD planned unit development and providing for the severability thereof, east of US Highway 77, south of East Cedar Lane, and north of Post Oak Road, Ward 5. Item number six, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of PP-2526-11, consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by Liberty Point Limited Partnership SMC Consulting Engineers PC for Liberty Point addition of planned unit development for 151 acres of property generally located east of Classen Boulevard, US Highway 77, one half mile south of Cedar Lane Road, and north of Post Oak Road, Ward 5. I would take the staff presentation.
See, hello, Justin Fisher, Department. Okay, so the applicant is proposing an amendment to the previously approved Liberty Point PUD. This PUD currently allows for commercial and resort uses. This amendment will increase the number of commercial structures on the site and add multifamily residential as an allowed use on the site. The multifamily buildings they are proposing will have a maximum height of five stories. This is the existing zoning. The PUD to the east is Destin Landing, which is another mixed-use type of development. The one to the north is another PUD, which is The Links, and it features more mixed use, primarily residential, but there is a golf course and assorted commercial uses with that golf course. To the west, there is some agricultural and R1 single-family properties with the uses on those currently being single-family dwellings. This is the AIM Future Land Use Plan. The site is designated as commercial. The existing land use of the area, 2023 aerial photograph. This is the Plenary Plat. The site development plan being proposed. The residential structures are kind of centered on the development. Those long skinny buildings are the multifamily structure they are proposing. It's the green space plan. All right, the proposed development is consistent with the AIM Norman Comprehensive Land Use Plan by promoting mixed use and incorporating interconnectivity via streets, sidewalks, and trails, providing landscaping, including opportunities for big box stores, and preserving open space. Staff for this request to put in commission for consideration. Staff is available for comments, and the applicant is also available for comments and has a presentation prepared.
Thank you. Any questions by commission for staff? Seeing none, we would take the applicant's presentation.
Hello, Libby Smith on behalf of the applicant. So this property probably looks pretty familiar to most of you. We came back and re-zoned this property originally. I think we were in front of Planning Commission like November, December of 2023, and so we are coming back to amend the PUD and update the site plan and then add some multifamily residential uses. So current zoning, you guys approved in 2023, it's a PUD. AIM Norman, the character area is mostly suburban with that little bit of corridor, a long classen, and then the future use is commercial. We're not requesting any change to any of that, our proposal is in line. So here is the updated site plan. I'll have a comparison on the next slide, but just so you can see, there's retail and commercial proposed along that western side, and then the resort on the east is mostly the same. We're just taking a little bit in the middle and converting it to multifamily residential. So here's what was approved in 2023, 2024. And so you can see, kind of, we're reconfiguring the commercial, and then we're taking that resort portion kind of to the west of the pond and converting it to multifamily. As part of the reconfiguration of the commercial buildings, you'll remember that we removed 24th Avenue and kind of reshaped it, and then we're doing that again in that north, what, northwest portion? And so that'll be the new 24th Avenue, and then a new street will come down through the interior of the development. So here's kind of a little bit more detail about the new plan. There'll still be the resort, and then we're proposing 334 approximately multifamily units, and it will be a mixture of the traditional apartment building type and then townhouses. And then commercial still along that western edge. We're still going to have a low impact, those natural features along the west-east part in the resort. We're keeping approximately 52 acres of open space, which is 35% of the property. And then there's still going to be a substantial buffer between the resort and the Destin Landing residential proposed to the east. So here's the preliminary plat. It's kind of less exciting than the site plan. And then included this slide from the previous PUD presentations, which shows the pond on the property and some of the amenities that will be in the resort. And then just kind of to recap, we're rezoning from a PUD to a PUD just to amend the site plan and add those multifamily residential uses. It'll still the resort, 334 units of multifamily, and then the mixed commercial, retail, and office uses. Unanimous approval at Parks Board. It was a Fee and Loue request donated to the public park that is directly north adjacent to our property, and so it's going to be in between The Links and our property, and then that's where our Fee and Loue money will go. We are in line with the current zoning and with AIM Norman. And then Justin already read that quote from the staff report, but it just says that the proposed development is consistent with AIM Norman. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions by commission of the applicant?
And I mentioned this the last time this was put forth, there's one access point in and out, and so, and I mentioned, and I'm just going to say it again, fire access in and out, I think, now, I'm not for sure when it comes to RVs and stuff, but when residential homes, I think more than 60 houses, you have to have two points of access, and this just has one, it looks like, so I don't know if that's been addressed or not.
Probably, engineers, yes. Or state staff.
Think you're being invited.
Can you point out where the second egress is? If there's a second one?
There's only one.
Yeah, there's not one, so.
So it's just along kind of the north of the property.
I mean, if it meets code, it meets code.
Right, and it is the same as last time.
Okay.
With less parking spaces.
Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant?
With the addition of mixed.
We'll wait just a moment.
I can zoom back so it's a little bit bigger. There, is that bigger?
Would you mind returning to the previous approved and proposed? Thank you. Is there any other planning commission discussion that we'd like to have on record? Seeing none, I would be ready to move to audience comments. Okay, are there any audience comments for this item? I don't see any. We could move to planning commission discussion. Any other discussion by commissioners? If there's none, I would take a motion. What was Commissioner Parker? And I would take a vote, oh, I'm sorry, any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I would take a vote.
You may vote. All votes have been cast.
Moving to our next items, number seven, eight, and nine. Item number seven, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of, excuse me, Resolution R-2526-83, a resolution of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending the AIM Norman Comprehensive Land Use Plan so as to remove a tract of land lying in the northwest quarter of Section 25, Township 9 North, Range 2 West of the Indian Meridian, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, from the urban reserve designation and urban low designation and place the same in the urban low designation, south side of East Robinson between 48th Avenue Northeast and 58th Avenue Northeast, Ward 5. Item number eight, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance O-2526-20, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending Section 36-201 of the Code of the City of Norman so as to remove a tract of land lying in the northwest corner of Section 25, Township 9 North, Range 2 West of the Indian Meridian to Norman, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, from the A2 Roulette Agricultural District and place the same in a PUD planned unit development and providing for the severability thereof, south side of East Robinson between 48th Avenue Northeast and 58th Avenue Northeast, Ward 5. And item number nine, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of PP-2526-12, consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by Rebecca Burkett, Golden Land Surveying for Sterling Fields for 59.33 acres of property generally located on the south side of East Robinson between 48th Avenue Northeast and 58th Avenue Northeast, Ward 5. And we would take the staff presentation.
Laura Hoggitt with the Planning Department. So we have our first request for an amendment to the AIM Norman Comprehensive Land Use Plan from urban reserve and urban low to all urban low for approximately 59 acres. So the urban reserve was chosen by the steering committee to follow topography for the western boundary, so that's why we ended up with some lots that are kind of split like this one. So the urban reserve section is on the northern end, and then it's urban low for the southern part. And the character area is suburban. And it's also a rezoning request from A2 to a planned unit development and a preliminary plat. So they're requesting 59 lots of approximately 3/4 of an acre. It's currently A2 surrounded by A2. To the east, there was a special use for a public utility, and there's a solar farm there. The subject tract is currently vacant, and except for the solar farm, it's mostly residential surrounding. Here's an aerial, and this is just kind of zoomed out. The preliminary plat showing the open space with the private park there on the west side and the green space exhibit. We did receive a protest of approximately 19.6% within the notification area. The applicant has a presentation as well, and staff is available for questions.
Thank you. Questions by commission of staff?
Clarify, there are no current public utilities to, that are on that property?
That's correct.
Is there a timeline in mind about when that might happen?
I don't have that. So within AIM and the land use plan and within the water and wastewater plans, it's on the developers to add it. So the plan does say that to be developed at urban low, you should have urban utilities.
Thank you.
Can we talk a little bit more about the specifics of mapping this particular parcel under the future land use? If you wouldn't mind going back a few slides showing the surrounding area?
If you wouldn't mind going back the few slides showing the surrounding area?
We have, there's actually a line of development even further to the north here that was all urban low. We have urban low surrounding on the one side, a very intentional break to the urban reserve. We talked about following the topography, but the surrounding area to the north was not zoned urban reserve, probably because it just happened to have already been developed, even though the topography also would kind of put it in the same drainage area. So with AIM being so recent and so intentionally and community-driven, I'm very hesitant making changes to what citizens have set forth in that plan. But kind of understanding, we also took a single unit parcel and more or less split it in half, and also split the front half of it that was street facing to the reserve and the back half low. And we also kind of did this also with a neighbor to the side. Can we talk a little bit more about maybe some of these other properties that were zoned urban low right across the street, even though maybe by topography would have been in urban reserve? Can you speak a little bit more as to how that mapping explicitly happened in the AIM process?
Well, I should preface by saying I didn't make the maps. They were determined by Garver with the drainage basins. So I have very limited knowledge on how the basins work around here. But yes, as you said, so the committee, a lot of the designations were determined by what's existing. There's a high unlikely, unlikelihood, I guess, of it being redeveloped within the life of the plan. So I'm not, I don't know, that, I feel like that's probably more of an engineering question. I don't know if I could answer exactly why they chose that boundary. Am I going the right way? There we go. Sorry, I probably didn't answer your question.
No, but that's okay. Are there any other questions by commissioner for staff?
This is, you know, with three-quarter acre lots, I mean, they're looking at private well and septic, I think, is kind of what maybe Liz was going at with the public utility stuff. My other question for staff is, if we weren't changing the urban restricted urban low, would, would we be putting this into a PUD? Or would it even be, would it go straight to development?
From A2, like if this was in ag residential, is that what you're?
Yeah.
Yeah, it would still have to be a PUD, but it could only go down to two acres then.
Okay. And this may be something that we, just to point out, there's been preliminary alignments of highways, future highways that is going right through the middle of this property. And so I think to date, if we can't consider any of that in what we're doing here, and so I think that it's, it's still a viable development project. And I'm just putting that out there.
Just to have you clarify, under urban low, what is the suggested density for that versus what is being proposed in the PUD?
So urban low is three units per acre. Let me turn a bunch of pages here. So there are about 59 acres with 59 lots. So we have it between 1.5 and 2.6, depending on if they include ADUs on every lot or not.
But you can't guarantee that an ADU will be constructed?
Correct.
In that? So it's not consistent with what is being, what is the tradit, the suggested density?
Correct.
Okay, just clarifying. I do think that Commissioner Parker's comment is something to consider, that it is, you're asking for a very distinct zoning change. And it is, should be considered a viable development project at this time, knowing that it may change in the future, what, what happens on that property? But at this point, we are being asked to change the zoning, which is a permanent change. Just putting that out there.
Any other questions for staff? Not, I would take the applicant presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Sean Rieger for the applicant tonight. And we are out in Ward 5 tonight on this one. This one is interesting, and you've, you've sort of already hit on it. It's unique in that we are the first to ask for an amendment to AIM Norman. Somebody had to be the first, and here we are. So, but it's, it's interesting in what has been proposed in this project. And I, I want you to think about this tonight carefully, if you will, I know you always do. But what we're asking for is a development right on the edge between urban low and urban reserve. And I'm going to show you tonight how stark of a difference that is. And we're trying to hit the middle, not the missing middle that we talk about with Center City. But maybe it's a missing middle that we should talk about in terms of the edge of urbanism in Norman. We've always had RE zoning in Norman. And what we found when we got into this project and looking at AIM is that essentially AIM rode away RE zoning. It basically eliminated. And do we really want to do that? Do we really want to eliminate completely the availability of RE zoning or acreage-type lots that are not 10 acres, not 30 acres? But they're not 6,000 square feet either, either. And that's what we've proposed tonight, is basically a development that is three-quarter acre lots with private utilities on it. And what we found when we were looking at zoning this and bringing it forward is there wasn't anything in AIM that allowed for that. And maybe that was by design, maybe that was by intention. Was that really what you want? You really want to eliminate that missing middle? The missing middle of the edge of urbanism? That's what we're proposing tonight. And so we ask that you consider that. Let me take you through it. You see the aerial right there, as, as Laura showed you, we're at East Robinson between 48th and 60th. We are cognizant that there has been a turnpike proposed through this site. We do think the site still works, at least half of it, the way they, but it will depend largely, of course, on how that comes through. And if it does come through, it probably changes this, along with the whole platitude of sites around Norman that will be back in front of you very likely. But for now, we know we have this, and we've proposed a development that we think works. Here's what really, I think, a perfect illustration is the contradiction. On the left, from AIM Norman, you see the character area, where we are fully within suburban. And we're not asking for any change to that. On the right, it just seems, no criticism, please, of the people that did this or went through this effort. It was one heck of an effort for two or three years to do this, and I applaud them. But as we get deep, I could tell you, this is going to happen a lot, frankly, when you get into dealing with implementing a comprehensive plan. I, I was actually around back in 2004 when we tried to implement Norman 2025. And you will run into sites that just don't fit it, that just don't work with the plan that was adopted. And unfortunately, perhaps for you, that's where you come in, to see if we can find a way to maneuver through that and work it. And that's what we're doing tonight. Because on the left, you see this site was fully shown to be character map of suburban, which is basically in urban condition. But on the right, the land use plan dissected the site. And I get and understand that sometimes topography makes us do those things. But if a developer can creatively and flexibly come up with a plan that makes that topography work, then I would urge you to let the developer do that. I was at a conference today with Laura, and I talked about flexibility. And I, that was sort of my push upon the planners in the room, was let's, let's, let's free up flexibility for designers and developers to go make housing work. It was a conference on how do we, how do we accelerate housing? And I think developers and builders will help you do that if you can free them up and not lock them into prearranged plans and prearranged ideas that you have to meet that or go home. That's where we struggle in the development community. Let us get flexible with an idea that might work. It might not fit your plan. It might not fit exactly what you have on your books. But does it work? Is it a functional housing option? If it is, then we would hope you would approve it. Let that flexibility happen. And then we can do that through PUDs, we can do that through SPUDs and, and flexible options that the developer and the builder can come up with to make it work. And so I'm asking you tonight to let that happen. Does it meet AIM plan? No. In the, on the right side, it doesn't. Meets it on the left, doesn't meet it on the right. And what we found too, when we got into this, is that AIM, again, no criticism AIM, please don't take it that way, but the, the intervening points of AIM were pretty interesting. When we did Norman 2025, we had a layering that took us from urban low residential to country residential, or I'm sorry, I forget the descriptions. But basically, it was the lighter yellow, which was the two-acre RE. And then we went to 10 acres on Norman 2025. What AIM Norman effectively did was took out the light yellow of two acres, eliminated. And as you see on the right, what it went to was urban reserve, which is a maximum of one unit per 30 acres, and put it immediately adjacent to urban low, which is a minimum of three units per acre, right next to each other. There was no buffering, there was no down zoning, there was no sort of movement away from the heavy urbanism of three units per acre to one unit per 30 acres. We used to have that with RE zoning. We used to have that with the light yellow color on Norman 2025. I think through PUDs, we can still do that, and that's what we're asking you to do tonight. But imagine this site, if we did exactly what AIM anticipated, and we had one unit per 30 acres on the top, one home, and three units, minimum, three units per one acre on the bottom. Well, if we did the one site, 59 acres as three units per minimum, at minimum, three units per acre, that is 180 homes. So let's imagine if we did that on the right, you know, roughly what? Little over half or so, so 90 or 100 homes we're going to put on the south, and we're going to have one road down to it with one home on the top. That would fit your plan. That would make it work. But is that all we should be able to do? Is that the, the end of flexibility for us? We can't do anything different? I hope not. I hope that's not what AIM Norman intended to happen. That you got away from the flexibility of a developer or a home builder or a designer to come to you with a plan that says, I have a way that will work. Doesn't fit your map, doesn't fit your colors, but I can make it work. In a method that has been long sought after and liked in those edges of our east urban Norman, two-acre developments, things like that. And so that's what we're asking you to do tonight. And so again, I, I put in the black line here. This is the AIM Norman map. That black line, the dash line is, please understand, not on AIM Norman. That was my addition to it. But I'm hoping what it illustrates to you is, is how this line meanders from, from the maximum of one home per 30 acres to the minimum of three units per acre. Do we really intend to make developers do that? To the finiteism of that? That you're going to say, we have to have three units per acre, minimum, make it six units per acre, make it five. But right next to it, you got to have only one home per 30 acres. Did we really intend that? I don't think we did. I hope we didn't. And so you saw probably the protesters' letters. The protesters' letters, in all due respect, what we often see when we're out in greenfield development, which is, please leave the field a field next to me. Please leave it an uninhabited zone. Please leave it as nothing but the grass and the trees. I totally understand that, I faced it for a long time. But as AIM Norman says, and as Commissioner said earlier, we have a housing problem. We need more housing. So we need more housing. So I hope you will respectfully look at those letters and understand that we do have to keep building housing. And those fields have to give their way to housing. But perhaps we can hit the middle and perhaps help those neighbors that are not living next to 180 homes. But perhaps they're living next to large acreages, three-quarters of an acre, of, of more or less sort of RE homes. Maybe we have hit the middle with a development that respects their concerns to the degree we can, but starts getting us to AIM Norman, which is important as well in building housing. So if you take that site, right through the middle of it, slash through the middle, put one home per 30 acres or minimum of three homes per acre, we're basically 59 homes on 59 lots. We're roughly one home per acre, or if you put in ADUs, we're a little more than that. Haven't we really blended the site to meet what AIM Norman envisioned for this locale? I think we have. And I think we've done it in a way, through flexibility and design, that can work. Will it make the neighbors happy? No. But would it be happier next to three units per acre? Four units per acre? Five? I doubt it. That's the site plan, you see it right there, 59 acres, 59 lots. ADUs are allowed, no knowledge yet, Commissioner, whether they would be built or not. It basically is a two-street development coming down off of, off of East Robinson with a pond in the middle, two, two common areas. The site basically drains two different directions, so we have two different common areas with detention and open space. But it's a pretty straightforward, simple development. But one that has been successful in rural East Norman, at the edge for many, many, many years and throughout many communities. We need, we talk about all different types of housing. I hope we haven't forgotten that there also are some types of housing that are larger than 6,000 square feet or 3,000 square feet. And that's what that one proposes. Again, 59 lots, 59 acres, each lot about a quarter, three-quarters of an acre. We have about six acres of open space, three acres of private parkland, all private sewer and water, really a rural context site. This is the preliminary plat. The engineer is here tonight, if you wish to discuss anything specific as in the engineering. And I will just summarize again, you see it? We ask for you to basically let us still do RE zoning. I want to finish with one other thought. When we wrapped pre-development, one of the protesters came up to me afterwards. And, and we discussed it for a while, and, and they said to me, okay, Sean, I get that, that AIM Norman said this should be character map of suburban. And that two-thirds of this site should be three units per acre. But should we do it now, or should we not do it until it's come to this site? And their point was basically, are we going to let leapfrog? I think one of their letters said leapfrog. Well, I hope you will understand that the mechanics of development across America are not going to allow you to figure out how it's going to go parcel by parcel by parcel. I wish it was that methodical, it's not. What happens is, it comes up when the owners wish to sell their lands and when, when the developer is able to buy it. That's not going to be in a very methodical, we're going to go this street first, then this street, then this street. And unfortunately, that's how AIM is probably going to have to evolve. There will be probably some patchwork. But if we can make it work within the confines of, of basically what you've proposed, we hope you would support that. So I've talked long enough. Happy to hear your questions and, and help you think through this as you can. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Moving to commission questions for the applicant. Are there any commissioner questions of the applicant?
Sean, I appreciate your insight.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions before I let the applicant sit down and move on?
It's really okay if there's no questions.
That's okay. All right. We're making very sure this time, we're, we're being very specific. Moving on then to audience comments. And Mr. Bill Swain? And again, just a reminder, please state your name, your address, three minutes. If you want a 30-second warning, let me know, otherwise I'll let you know when the time is up.
Thank you. Bill Swain, 1501 Burlwood Road. I wish it was just as simple as that, but, but the AIM plan does have many other aspects that involves encouraging infill, transitional development, not extending our infrastructure beyond the service areas and all that. So, so that is also a charge and part of the AIM plan. It's not just to say this line's mapped, so, so turn in your application, and here we go. So we do have a leapfrog situation. And I'm going to address a couple of. Uh, and I'm going to address a couple of the engineering aspects that are caused from leapfrog development as to why we want to encourage developing as it progresses. Not to mention that it's more acceptable as time creeps in on neighbors and things like that, but I, I do want to have a couple of tons to talk about some of the engineering challenges. And I wish I had as long as Sean had, so I could, I could have the opportunity to state the case eloquently, but uh, let's talk about drainage for a second. When you do a subdivision and, and these are great development people, work with them all the time. Uh, they know what they're doing, but it's different in an urban environment. Uh, when we do our drainage report and we design for peak flow. And we try to keep that at a historical level. When in an urban environment, when you have storm sewers to go in and drainage easements and improved channels. The peak flow is important because that's flood protection. In the urban environment, where most of this water runs across the Bruels. It's running through native pasture, poor soils. They were terraced years ago to stabilize and they are stabilized. So when you design for peak flow, that's so the downstream system handles it. In the urban environment, it's erosion. And they're releasing that on a pasture. So there is more flow. The rate's not increased above the peak, the worst case rate. But there's more, the durations are longer, more of those runoffs are at a higher velocity. They're running off more frequent. These clumpy native soils. Poor soils, because they used to erode, they're stabilized. You're now having more frequent, longer duration erosion events. Not through drainage easements, not through storm pipes, not through improved channels, but across their property. When you have public roadways, drainage systems. You typically don't release those back on private property.
Thank you very much for your comments, and thank you for your letter as well.
Thank you very much.
Moving to, uh, Mike Brule.
All right, I will accept your 30 second warning on that. Um, Mike Brule, I live at 1,001 48th Avenue Northeast. My house is the, uh, one that's currently in the graphic right now. Um, my dad, Louis Brule, who's also with me, and my brother and uncle all own the properties immediately to the west of the proposed, all the way down to the bottom. Uh, as Mr. Swain noted, uh, the property over the years, way back when my dad was a kid, uh, was terraced for a reason. It was, it was all farm and, and cattle for, for us, as, as a family, this was our, our livelihood, this is what we grew up doing, and it's always been in the family until just recently, so. Um, the, the terracing was there for erosion control because it was a problem. And, um, and even through the middle of the property, as you can see immediately to the left of west of the development, you'll see the red, and it continues to be a, a concern and a problem, so the detention, uh, is, is, uh, something that we are very concerned about. Um, we still have cattle and livestock all over this property, and so, uh, the health and wellbeing of, of our livelihood is also kind of a concern of what may or may not run off of this development, so. Um, the 2045 map, um, shows the, the reserve in, in the Mr. Reader's comment about why it's split. Um, I'm a firm believer that it's split largely because of the existing contours of this property. Uh, what they haven't pointed out is down the right side of the development is a fluid 20 inch gas line. It runs north, south, the entire length of the property, and, um, it is what is considered plowed depth, which means it's only a few inches deep. And, uh, having, having farmed this property and, and drive tractors and things over it, I can tell you there are places where it's only inches deep. Um, and, and we've actually had to push dirt over places of it just to move tractors over it to farm the property that's owned by Norman Public Schools north of the solar panels, so. Um, all of this stuff is, is just to say that we, we are familiar with the project, uh, we're familiar with the topography and uh, the entire property, except for maybe the bottom quarter, bottom third, uh, will ultimately drain onto my dad and I. Um, all of that ends up in that tree line, which is the low spot and just happens to be one of the initial inlets for the Thunderbird watershed. Uh, which is also why I believe that the top half of that property is considered reserved 2045.
30 seconds?
Thank you. And so, um, you know, quickly going down the list, there is no infrastructure, aquifer recharge is a consideration and a concern. The city put a, uh, wellhouse there and, uh, that was told to us that it would be used limitedly. Um, there is a heavy influence of water runoff. And what Mr. Swain was talking about as far as the leapfrogging, the 2045 reserve map specifically says that developments like this should have an adjacent or an abutting property.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you, and appreciate your consideration.
Uh, moving to Steve Lemke. Think you know the drill, if you've been here, but if you'd like a 30 second warning, let me know, state your name and address, please.
Okay. My name is Steve Lemke and I live at 1301 Burlwood here in Norman. Um, to start off, uh, I want to say that I strongly support the AIM land use plan adopted recently. It's a solid thoughtful plan that provides guidance for Norman's growth eastward toward Lake Thunderbird over the next 20 years. The plan emphasizes that suburban expansion in East Norman should be transitional. Infill focused and consistent with the existing rural character of East Norman. Avoiding leapfrog development and just drop in your lap subdivisions. In other words, the plan sets a clear framework for orderly and respectful growth, and it gives the city the authority to, to decline projects that are out of step with this framework of the AIM plan. Of course, my concern is this, is this subdivision, the engineering and layout of this subdivision are very well done. And the developers clearly put effort into the design. But the issue is not the design or any part of the design, it's its location and the timing, most importantly, the timing. This subdivision does leapfrog over large areas of undeveloped and sparsely occupied land and reaches right up to the easternmost boundary of the aimed 20 year plan. According to AIM's thoughtful vision, this specific site is just not ready yet for suburban develop, suburban development. Approving this subdivision now would undermine the plan, set a precedent that weakens AIM's guidance and erodes trust in our city's long-term planning process. The same subdivision 10 years from now may fit perfectly within the vision AIM outlines, 10 years from now, not today. Not now, not at this location, not yet. Approving it prematurely, uh, approving this, this thing prematurely effectively says that we could ignore the careful guidance of our own planning document. Which I hope this commission would avoid. I urge you to deny this subdivision at this time. And preserve the integrity of the AIM plan, ensuring that East Norman grows in a thoughtful and deliberate way that rejects both the plan and the community's character. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other audience comments for this item? Come on up, yeah? Same, same thing, we're going to give you three minutes, name and address, and we appreciate you being here.
I would like the 30 second timer, it, it should be short and sweet, but just in case. My name is Brandon Nofire and I live at 9801 East Boyd Street. And they said a lot more eloquently, what I'm just going to reiterate a few things here, a few key points. That there are no utilities from the city, so you're going to have 59 wells and 59 septic systems out there. And the AIM 2045 plan was actually meant to help the watershed. This development absolutely just does not do that. And while I understand Norman is growing and needs more housing. We on the city council are actively working to create density in the city proper, specifically so we can leave the rural Norman, rural parts of Norman rural. And they're trying for three quarter acre lots, when the bare minimum of either side that they're saying is two acres, and so I would just like to point that out. And it's going to stick out like a sore thumb, everybody keeps talking about leapfrogging and it does. And it's honestly just incongruous with everything else around it, you, I know you all see the maps, there's nothing around it. And just a personal opinion, I don't think a development like this belongs past 48. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Seeing none, I would move to planning commission discussion.
I'll make some comments, um, so uh, first, there was a really good question earlier, um, to staff as to why that urban reserve area was kind of cut in right there, and I think, you know, somewhat answered through applicant presentation, there were some comments from neighbors, um, or I guess, uh, residents of Norman that made comments, um, about the topography. Um, it, it, the zoomed out map of the urban reserve, uh, line um, a- actually was most telling to me because that, that little cut in, jut in uh, was very intentional. Um, I mean, when you went north, south with the boundary right there, everything going up and down was fairly, um, linear north, south, until you get a little further south, but then you have this jut in, so I, um, I don't think it was something that was random that was put in the, um, in fact, it looked, it seems to be the opposite, that there was quite a bit of thought put into the inclusion of, of that in the urban reserve area. Um, I, I, I want to say I really appreciate both applicants' comments and, uh, the resident comments, that was very, very informative on both sides. Um, I agree that as a commission, we're going to have to have flexibility. Um, I, it also seems, uh, pretty dangerous when we have language in the AIM Norman plan that is specifically addressing um, adjacent or abutting developments. Um, and this is clearly outside of that, um, and so uh, I, I don't want to sound like I'm talking out of two sides of my mouth, but I think, uh, Mr. Swain put it very well that um, yes, we have a housing shortage, yes, we have housing issues, we need to be adding units. At the same time, um, there are options for that within the plan. And, um, my biggest concerns coming into the AIM Norman process um, was addressing density in areas that were walkable in addition to preserving the land closest to Thunderbird. Um, because those were two prime things that we need to address and uh, and so I, with that being said, I, this may be development that is appropriate down the line, but at this point in time, I, I can't support it.
Okay, um, just piggybacking on Commissioner Brule, I do feel like this is a premature presentation for this piece of land, I do think that it was very intentional how AIM looked at the rural character as we go back, as we get closer to Lake Thunderbird. I think at this point, um, it kind of ignores the protected watershed. If you were going to put 59 septic systems and 59 wells, that potential being there, I, I think that is a that is not the intent of what was, um, designated as urban reserve and urban low. Um, so I feel like, well, maybe in the future, this is a more appropriate plan, I feel like at this time it is not.
Thank you.
Um, living out in Ward 5, um, in the, in the U of Lake Thunderbird. I'm very cognizant of, of how everyone that lives in Ward 5 values conservation and preservation and protection of the watershed. And, um, that was very evident at Lakeview Elementary when, um, we had a really great showing of community to give input for AIM Norman. Where, where I live, um, I, I think I, I know where I live, DEQ put, puts limitations on even what I can do with septic. And so, um, the property that I'm at, um, just as tangential, but I'll get back to the point. Um, it was grandfathered in an old well, the, the well and the septic are over 40 years old. And, uh, and so if anything changes, we have to go back to doing like a percolation test. And if it was to fail, we would have to do anaerobic septic instead of in-ground septic. Um, the idea of 59 anaerobic septics potentially is, is a, an offense on the sense of smell. Um, it's probably far enough from the lake that it has less intense regulation by the DEQ, but, um, all the way to our state level, there, there is a an importance placed on this watershed being protected and any development being very mindful of that. And I, I just can't, um, I can't support this premature development that is, um, it's almost like an assault to the conservation aspects that our whole community agreed with for the conservation of and preservation of this area. So I, I can't agree with it.
Are there any other commissioner discussion or comments to make?
Um, I would just add, this, this one is a little bit challenging because of the, and I think I kind of got to it with my staff question, the intentionality in which these lines were drawn, but also taking an existing parcel of land and splitting that use in two. Um, I think that's also challenging for, as a property owner to have to navigate and specifically cutting off the frontage, the street frontage parts of that from having a more accessible use on there. Um, great comments from everybody, we always appreciate the audience comments, even though it is limited by nature of keeping things consistent, but we do always appreciate everyone who comes out and also that sends in additional information. Um, something else that wasn't directly brought up is the relation to residential next to agricultural use when it comes to runoff that may not be stormwater volume, but in the use of certain chemical components that are used in lawn care. Um, specifically usually those front lawns and some of those needs, and then similarly materials that are used in agricultural production and manures and things like that, that can also impact water the other way, so there can be some challenges sometimes with those two, and specifically with that runoff component in here. Um, this one's a challenging one, I think this will be a hard one for council too, and we just appreciate everyone who came out and the applicant for making eloquent points on both sides. Uh, if there isn't any other planning commission discussion, I would take a motion.
To reject.
So typically we have a motion to clarify, or typically our motion would be to approve and that we would typically vote yes or no on, clarifying your motion would be to specifically recommend denial? To reject?
Yes.
So in support of rejection would be a yes. And in support of potential approval would then be a no in this case, is the intent?
Yes, that is the intent.
Okay, is there a second on that motion? Any other discussion on that motion?
Any other discussion on that motion?
I will just say for ease of consistency, sometimes a motion to approve regardless of how you intend to vote can make things a little bit more streamlined and seamless, but I appreciate the comment. That said, we have a motion to reject on the floor, and if there's a-
I just want to make sure I'm clear. I, so if it's a motion, yeah, yes, it's a motion to reject.
The motion to reject is on the floor. So if the, you would like to reject said motion, your vote would be a yes. If you would like to approve the, the application, it would be a no. If you don't want to reject, it would be a no. Double negatives. It's why we usually do a motion to approve, just pointing that out.
Yeah, if, um, I, I don't want there, it is just, uh, I, I would have done the same thing. I've almost said a motion to deny. But, uh, to make sure there's no confusion to anybody who's reading on this vote, I wonder if you would consider withdrawing the motion and then resubmitting so then, you know.
Motion to reject, and I will make a motion to approve for clarification purposes.
Is there any other, as a point of order for the city attorney, is there any other logistics we need to do to make that motion that's on the floor be amended? Thank you so much.
Yes, it is our recommendation typically that we approve, um, so that it's, it's, it's easier to follow. However, the clarification would be functional because there was a motion and a second on the floor. It's actually proper to vote to amend it. So I, I would say a withdrawal isn't functional at this point. So if you want to change it to a motion to approve, you should probably vote to amend it. It's pretty sticky.
To amend it? And have that seconded to then vote on that?
Right, um, yes, there would need to be a motion. An amendment to the motion to change it to a motion to approve. Honestly, at this point, I think with the clarification on record, it would be cleaner to proceed.
To just vote?
Subject to that at this point. I mean, if I could make a suggestion.
Sorry. I'm sorry.
I withdraw my amended second.
You withdraw your amended motion.
Okay, so at this point, as a point of order to clarify, our motion on the floor is a request to deny the application. Therefore, if the motion is to deny, if you are in agreement with the motion, you would vote yes to deny the project, and you would vote no to approve the project. If, is there any other discussion on the motion to be had? And this is why we have discussion on motions built in. Any others on there? Uh, yeah, that's, we don't have audience comment right now. Thank you so much. So if we are, if there's no other discussion, we can move to vote. Okay, we will take a vote.
You may vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to deny passes seven to zero.
Moving on to item number ten, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance O dash two-five-two-six dash two-one and ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma amending section thirty-six dash two-oh-one of the Code of the City of Norman so as to remove lots forty-eight and forty-nine in Block Four of the State University addition to Norman, Cleveland County, Oklahoma from a spud simple planned unit development and place the same in spud simple planned unit development and providing for the severability thereof, seven-six-five Jenkins Avenue, Ward Four. And we would take the staff presentation.
Hello, Justin Fish of the Planning Department. We have an application, or the applicant proposing to amend their previously approved spud. The proposed amendment would remove the allowance for commercial uses on the ground floor of the structure and instead replace those uses with residential uses. The proposed structure would consist of six units in total, six on the first floor, six on the second floor, and the third floor would just be a common space for the residents. They are proposing thirty-seven-point-five units per acre. And the parking area for the site has been reconfigured and consists of twelve parking spaces. This is the subject site and existing zoning. The AIM future land use, existing land use, the subject site, and the site development plan. The staff did recommend having a fence along the north side of the property where it abuts a residential use. However, the applicant wanted to forego this requirement and stay with the approved version of the PUD where, or SPOD where there was not a fence present there. All right. Staff for this request to planning commission for consideration. Staff is available for comments. The applicant is also available for comments, and they also have a presentation for the commission.
Thank you. Any questions by commissioner for staff? And just clarifying, when this project last came before us was about a year ago? Was that right?
Correct. I want to say it was last year.
So clarifying that this was a pud that we approved one year ago, but the main functional difference is the retail on the bottom was changed to residential on the bottom.
Correct. SPOD, and they are changing from commercial allowances on the ground floor to purely residential for the whole building.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I would take the applicant presentation.
All right. Thank you, Justin. Sean Rigger on this one. And this one I'll be pretty brief on, as it is one you saw previously, really quite recently, um, in the last couple of years. There really is just one change to this spud effectively than it was before. And, and Justin said, well, it's basically taking away the commercial on the bottom and going full residential on this property as opposed to the mixed use. Uh, I'll take you through it very quickly. You can see, uh, basically, we are spud. This is the location on the, on the left. We're core urban high, obviously a very dense area of, of Norman for density. We're not changing the density on this from what was approved before from residential. So even though we took away the resident, the commercial on the bottom, we are of the same density that was approved previously, so no change there. Spud you see on the right, again, it was already a spud, so no change there. Uh, this is the site plan. The site plan is really pretty similar. In fact, I'm gonna go to a comparison of the site plans. So you can see, uh, that's what you approved before on the left, and on the right is what we're asking you to approve tonight. Basically, very similar. In essence, we have the same number of parking spaces. One of them now is accessible parking space. And, uh, we had increased the impervious, I think, by one percent. We now are at, I think, sixty-seven percent impervious. So we were not up at the eighty-five percent or the eighty percent or anything like that. But that's basically the change. Uh, we moved the bike rack slightly. We removed an overhang from the upper floors. Uh, we added accessible parking. Again, the same number of parking and impervious is really essentially the same. Sixty-five-point-seven percent is the difference. Summary, again, Justin already kind of talked through this, but six units, um, on, uh, six bedrooms on the first floor, six bedrooms on the second and the third floor would basically be the common living area for the different users in the property. There are no protests. We're not aware of any controversy or, um, or negativity on this project as we've progressed through the, the zoning. So staff said it will blend with the existing housing in the area. And with that, I'll keep it that brief and happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, moving to questions of the applicant by commissioners.
This is, uh, as much curiosity as anything. Well, first, this is not in the Center City Form Base Code, correct?
I'm sorry?
This is not in the Center City Form Base-
It is, it is not, Commissioner. Let me show you the separation point. Maybe I shouldn't have skipped over that so quick, but you see the light blue on the right side, right side of this image? The light blue is the Center City Form Base Code. And this is an area that is intended eventually to be perhaps part of the Center City Code, but, uh, but it's not at this time.
And this is more the curiosity thing. Was this part of the area that was kind of carved out for the campus corner area?
Correct, Commissioner.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, I would move to audience comments. And then seeing none, I would move to planning commission discussion. Any discussion on this item? I would say comprehensively, it looks very similar. There's just the use, change of use, probably consistent with some other things we've seen, even in applications tonight. Okay, if there's no other discussion, I would take a motion. Any discussion on the motion? If none, I would take a vote.
You may vote. All votes have been cast, and it carries seven to zero.
Moving to item number eleven, consideration of approval accept, oh, so sorry. We, uh, yes, I'm sorry. Item eleven, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance O dash two-five-two-six dash seventeen and ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma amending section thirty-six dash one-zero-one definitions of Article thirty-six dash I zoning in general within chapter thirty-six zoning of the Code of the City of Norman to revise the definitions for family and dwelling unit and providing for the severability thereof. And we would take the staff presentation on this item.
So sorry. Uh, Bora Hoggit with the Planning Department. Okay, so, uh, we are proposing to amend the definitions for family and dwelling unit to remove the three unrelated language. This was originally adopted in our zoning code in nineteen fifty-four. And over the years, enforcement has really changed from, uh, who lives where to what's happening outside, like parking noise, party nuisance houses, things like that. Our current ordinance is really difficult to enforce. The onus is on the neighbors to come up with all of the evidence. Um, proving familial relations can be quite difficult. Sorry, so there has been, um, a legal trend across the United States to update ordinances to, um, kind of allow more flexibility with, um, today's housing market as it is. It can be necessary for, um, some people to need to live with roommates or what have you. So this is an effort to modernize our code. We do have a little information about, um, what code can enforce and police can enforce. If you have more questions about other things that we can do to help the problems that we are usually, um, told from neighbors regarding, uh, like student housing and things like that. So, uh, we have legal and code here to help answer any questions. And we forward this to you. Sorry, that was awkward.
Thank you. In this case, our staff is our applicant. Are there any questions of staff by commission?
Sorry, I didn't mean, I wasn't like, I need to talk. I would like to hear, uh, I've just heard over the years that this, the, the three unrelated persons ordinance is, is essentially unenforceable with the comment you made about proving familial relations. And, um, so I'd like to, I'd like to hear more, whatever can be explained relatively briefly with, uh, um, related to enforce, enforcement there.
Okay, I will let Janita answer.
Good evening. Janita Hatley, co-compliance supervisor. So typically, when we receive a complaint of this nature, we would send a letter to the property owner advising them that we've received this complaint, educating them on what the ordinance says. Oftentimes, we receive no, no feedback from the property owner. We make, you know, do make site visits, drive by the property. If we don't observe anything very obvious, such as multiple cars or other types of issues, we have little to go on. If we continue to receive, a lot of these complaints, I will say, are submitted anonymously. The previous complaints we received. We've had one complaint submitted this year. Uh, there's, it's been closed due, due to insufficient evidence. Last year, we had eight. Uh, only one of them went to municipal court because of the neighbors providing the vehicle logs, the daily vehicle logs. And then the previous year, in twenty-twenty-three, we had nineteen complaints that were submitted. Probably, I didn't look up to see how many of them were anonymously submitted, but probably most, if not all. Uh, and they were all closed due to insufficient evidence. So, uh, we're not able to prove that. We, the landlords frequently will submit their lease to us, which shows three or fewer names on there. So, you know, that's, that's, that's insufficient eviden, that's, that's reason enough for us to close the case at that point. We can't require or force our way in and, you know, count heads, so to speak. So it does become very difficult. We do utilize our off-street parking ordinance. So if they're parking on the grass or if they have trash or debris out on the property, we do and can and will always address those issues. The complaint that we had last year that did go to municipal court, there were not any complaints for those types of issues. They had, um, the neighbors at that time had concerns because when they had parties, which I don't know how many of them they had, it resulted in a lot of cars on the street. So that was, that was one of the main focuses that I observed in, in the complaint that they had submitted. But we didn't have any code violation issues there to support anything else going on. So, um, in certain circumstances, I would say that if we have a complaint where there is thirty people living in a single-family home, we could, we do have a property maintenance code that we have adopted, which regulates square footage and required for each occupant in a bedroom. So we could send a notice to the owner saying, we've had a complaint that you have thirty occupants in this two- or three-bedroom home or whatever it is. Would you schedule an inspection with us so that we can verify that you meet the minimum safety requirements? And see how that plays out. Uh, we might have to work with legal on adjusting that, um, if, if that doesn't seem to work for us. But it's, it's just not been an enforceable issue that we've, that we've been able to handle. But the number of complaints, um, I will say, I want to add this. I had several people call, or a handful of people call around the time students were moving in at OU. And the bulk of those issues that were mentioned to me, you know, when I asked, are you having parking issues on the, are they parking on the grass? No. Are they having a party? No. Are you having trash and debris in the yard? No. We just know they're not supposed to have more than three, and they have more than three. We feel that they have more than three, and that was their main, uh, all, all these handful of, of complaints that I got. That's what, that's what it was, so.
And, uh, uh, I counted the nineteen-eight and the one this year, the, with the one last year going to municipal court. What, so that, that was ruled a violation of the, the ordinance? And, and what was the, what was the actual evidence behind that?
It was a four or a five. I can't remember exactly. A four or a five-bedroom house, and they had an occupant in each bedroom. The neighbors submitted those logs. They, we did file a citation based on their log, evidence of five or six or however many vehicles there were. It went back and forth in court, um, from what I recall, Ms. Jeanne Snyder just recently telling me. And the landlord eventually submitted a, a lease with the, with three names on it. So I don't know if an occupant moved out. I'm not sure exactly what happened. I, I don't have that information for you. But, um, it was resolved with fines being issued to the property owner, and I believe they sold the property after that, so that's how that one resulted.
Thank you.
Sorry, I did want to add, the removal of three unrelated does not mean that that changes uses allowed on a property, so the zoning does not change. If it's a single-family zoning district, that doesn't mean that suddenly you're allowed to have eight units, it just means you can have more than three unrelated living together in a unit.
Thank you, any other questions by commission for staff? It's like we have some audience comments, if there's any other questions before we take audience comment. Okay, thank you very much. I would take the audience comments, I'm going to start with Carlinda Gravel, and same thing as you've heard before, please state your name and address. If you'd like a thirty-second warning before your time is up, please let me know, otherwise I'll yield a full three minutes for you, and at the end, thank you for your comments.
Thank you, yes, Carlinda Gravel, four ten North Ponca Avenue, lived directly west of Longfellow, so quite congested at certain points of the day. And I would like a thirty-second warning, please. I am concerned, and I would like you to reconsider this. The way this is stated, we would actually be not, we are actually making an allowance now for six people, possibly eight, when we change the code to be in with agreement with the Oklahoma code. So what the concern is that this will more than likely lead to other ordinance changes if we're going to allow eight people with eight cars to live in a single-family unit dwelling and not require it to be where each person has a bedroom. So we could put eight people in a one-bedroom as long as they're not, what, eight people? Six people? That's quite concerning for the neighbors. We've been through this, I think, in our past, that's what got us to the three-person rule to begin with. We have some college concerns, people concerns that we need to deal with, and I think from the documentation that was supporting this, citizens are very concerned. We have had issues that led us to where we are now, and we have, we've been doing well considering, maybe we need to re-change things just so that we can have more enforcement. Citizens IQ, citizens are getting more involved, I believe each of you probably received some emails today concerning this issue, as this is now all over Facebook. So yeah, so we would please ask you to not approve this the way it is at the moment, but reconsider a very cautious moving forward, because this could really start a roller coaster in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl Ann Densow, sorry. I'll let you state your name into the record.
Cheryl Ann Densow, my property is in wards four and six, and I live at twenty-nine twenty-five Redwood Drive. Consider the possibility of somebody moving in, a gentleman moving in and, and having, you know, eight girlfriends in, in a dwelling. What does that look like to you? Looks like human trafficking to me, okay? If there's no teeth in what we do in our council or our planning, we have no way to control any sort of problem that arises in our city. I know, I didn't, I wasn't born and raised here, but I've been living here since nineteen seventy-seven, and it's a slippery slope when you start allowing multiple unrelated people living in a smaller unit or a dwelling that's really made for families. It will impact every single one of our neighborhoods directly, and it'll be a problem for landlords. The landlords in this town will have a real problem moving forward. They had a hard enough time right now keeping track of who's coming and going and, and who's trashing their properties and who's not trashing their properties and, and maintenance and all of that. Let's just take the equation of student housing out of it completely. This is a social issue where you're wanting to stuff more people in a dwelling, okay? Nothing good comes from stuffing more people in a dwelling. If it's not a direct family member, there's complications, lots of it. So say you have six roommates, and all those roommates have a significant other, there's going to be traffic problems, there's going to be arguments, there's going to be normal social interaction that causes discord. It's going to spill out into the street, and it's going to impact the neighbors. I'm sorry, you have to look at this from a human perspective, not from, well, you know, three seems like too small, six or eight seems way too big. I implore you to vote no on this proposal and rethink how we're doing things in this town. We're having a problem with criminal elements, we need to be able to address that, put some bite behind zoning.
Thank you very much for your comments. Elaine Boyd.
I'm Elaine, sorry, I'm Elaine Boyd, five hundred Chautauqua Avenue. I'm here to talk about some new residents who have purchased a home directly next door to me, and they want to add a lot of amenities to the property. That means that they want to add a house of approximately, well, close to seven hundred square feet in the backyard, extra pads of concrete for parking, concrete walkways, they want to add a driveway, there is an existing driveway, but it hasn't been in use for a long time, they want to add a driveway, they want to widen the driveway that is already on the property. They want to make several changes, and all of them sound very nice until you look at the plan, and there's some green space on there, but there's now another building and a lot of concrete. And my, part of my concern is the water that comes from that much concrete where there's not enough land to suck it up. I will tell you that we spent a fortune this past year at my house because the water came pouring in from the rains in May, and I had essentially three rivers in my basement. I have concerns about too much concrete, I have concerns about using that additional living unit in the backyard for non-family members. The person who was moving in had indicated to me that they were planning to rent out to college girls slash sorority girls. I don't care who lives there, but I'm not excited about having anybody else living, coming and going. We've lived in our house forty years, we raised four kids there. We moved there because it was quiet, it was picturesque, it was an old home, we like old homes, we fixed up our old home. And I'm concerned about the number of people coming and going, the increase in human traffic, the increase in vehicles. I'm not so sure about stuffing people into the house, there's a main house that has several bedrooms, but this house in the back is quite elaborate. I'm concerned about what's going to happen to the nature of the historic district because it no longer is looking historic, people are using it as investment property, and we want it, and our neighbors want it, and pretty much everybody that I've talked to on the, on two streets, that would be La Homme and Chautauqua, have, they've told me about their concerns and how they do not want the neighborhood to go in that direction.
Thank you very much for your comments. Yeah, thank you.
You bet.
Do we have any other audience comments?
Robert Bruce, two oh nine Lyon Drive in Norman here. I could really think of tens of thousands of reasons why not to change ordinance. If you're a homeowner and you bought into HOA in a neighborhood, you came with certain expectations related to buying that home, putting that investment forward and living there, and then to change the framework where you've subject all these homeowners to increase, what, a little bit of risk, who's, you know, what's going to live next door to me? And I heard tonight about a cap, eight, six to eight people, I wasn't aware of that there was a cap. When I read the initial change, I'm thinking, well, there's, they've changed the definition of what a family is, meaning that blood-related or instrument of law, some, some document through instrumental law, like adoption, et cetera, to just a group of people who decide for some economic reason, hey, we're going to live together, we're going to rent this house, and we don't have a limit as far as the number of people can put in this house. I can only imagine what will, how that would change a, someone living next door as far as their pleasurable enjoyment of the property they have, how that would change a neighborhood over time. And what you'll have eventually, I think in some areas, is a bunch of houses that are rental houses that are bought by investors. I don't think that's exactly what Norman wants, particularly if you've lived here for five, ten, fifteen, twenty, I've heard forty years. I don't think it's fair to change the groundwork related to a property owner and what they can anticipate relating to quiet enjoyment of that property. So if you've bought into an R one and you've changed the definition of really, you know, what is an R one, it's a house where anyone can live in, and as far as the number of quantity is, is right. So I really want you to think about that, and once again, I, you know, just like the person before me, you know, vote no on this. I think you're going to have just a massive uproar of people that are homeowners. I think the landlords are going to say, hey, thank you for looking at the cap, so I can put more people in the house. Make a little bit more money. But I appreciate the time, thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, we have another audience comment?
My name is Trent Baggett, I live at five eleven Chautauqua. I worked in prosecution for almost forty years before I retired. My point to that was a question that you asked, Commissioner Brewer. I wasn't sure that I could hear the, the discussion of the two ladies with you all because they were kind of low talkers and I just didn't hear them, but there was a question that you had about whether or not it was provable, if a citation was entered against a landlord, I guess, I believe it was against a landlord, in relation to whether they were related persons or whether there were unrelated persons who were living in the residence. And I get the, I get the impression, I know that there was an effort that was made by someone a couple of years ago that lived on La Homme, and to try to prove that because of a neighbor, that there was gobs of boys that were living in the house. And it kind of gets, it sounded like, in the response from the ladies, that it's difficult to prove, you can't prove it. You really can prove these things, it depends on whether you can prove it or can't prove it, or whether you choose not to, not to prove it, and you, you choose not to enforce it. And just because you choose not to enforce something doesn't mean that you ought to take it off the books, it means you ought to try harder to enforce it. It can be done, you just have to work hard at it. Thank you.
Thank you, please come on up.
Hi, my name is Rick Polland, I live at four twenty-five Chautauqua, and my wife and I have lived there for thirty-plus years, and my understanding is it's R one, which is a single-family dwelling, and I'd like to share with you what's happened in the neighborhood over the, the years that I've lived there, and it started probably twenty years ago, someone bought a house down the street and said they were buying it for their kid to live in while they went to OU, but immediately they rented at least one, maybe more, excuse me, of the bedrooms to other unrelated people, and it's been that way ever since. I don't, their kids are not going to OU anymore, but somebody's retained the property because it's profitable. This has happened in more than one instance, and as Elaine Boyd said, it's happening right now, the people have bought a four-bedroom house and are adding a two-bedroom accessory dwelling unit, and totally lying that they're going to rent it to sorority girls, so I don't really understand how R one means having these places that are rented to six different unrelated people, that's not single-family residences. So I hope you'll keep this rule, it at least gives us something that we can, can fight for, you know, if you say, okay, there's no limit, there's no limit at all. I think the fact that there is a rule, some people still like to follow the rules in our country, not all, but I think it does discourage some people from buying these houses and then renting them out to multiple unrelated people, which is not something that most of us want to live by that chose to live in R one, thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other audience comments? Seeing none, I would move to planning commission discussion, and I would also venture to ask staff for some other clarifying questions on what, what the other means of enforcement for nuisances are, and also if you can speak to occupancy in particular, and there were some specific comments about can six people share one bedroom, can you maybe address how that can be enforced or not, and what, what fire code maybe looks like, and what the, what either that property maintenance code, how that functionally is enforced and why that's maybe more beneficial than this rule?
Sorry, we're tagged, Amy. So the International Property Maintenance Code requires seventy square feet for a bedroom for one, for every occupant you add, you add fifty square feet, so if you have two, you have a hundred and twenty square feet, if you have three, you have a hundred and seventy square feet, so. Very, it would be very rare, I think, to have a bedroom big enough to fit eight people in, I suppose it could happen in a really big house. Sorry, that's my voice, I don't, that's just how loud I am, sorry.
What was the other question besides that?
So talking about, that was on that ordinance, maybe that was the property maintenance code, how would that get enforced, and what determines occupant, is it the person actually in the space right then, is it the person that sleeps overnight, maybe defining that a little more?
That might be, we might need to get legal to help with some of that, I would think, but how would we determine occupants?
It depends if they have to get a building permit, if they're getting a permit to do structural changes, then we're looking at that, building codes looking at that when they do permit review. A house would have an occupancy limit, but we're not necessarily asking every time someone gets a building permit, how many people are you going to have living here, that's not...
On a certificate of occupancy on, let's just say, an average-sized three-bedroom house, approximately, what would the occupancy limit be on something like that? Is it the maximum number of people that could be there at any given point for a party, or is it the occupants?
I don't believe it's signed when they just make sure you're meeting the seventy square feet minimum.
Okay, okay. So, and if somebody wanted to enforce that, could you maybe go through the logistics of how that, the mechanics of how that process would go?
If we had a complaint of an excessive number of occup- If we had a complaint of an excessive number of occupants, we would reach out to the property owner and request an interior inspection to determine that. If they chose to ignore us and deny that, that would be something we would probably visit with legal about our next steps that we could possibly take. We haven't, we haven't come across a situation like this. So I can't say for certain how, how that would play out. But if there was a concern that they were violating that in such a manner that it would make it unsafe for the occupants with multiple occupants in there, then that's, that's what, the steps we would take. We'd send a letter to the property owner and urge them to pay attention to the property maintenance code for the safety of their tenants, for their guests.
With, how would that functionally be improved from the current investigation process of the three-person rule?
We currently have that, or we, we have the property maintenance code that we utilize now for interior and exterior issues. We have not come across a situation like this. We have not had a, a property that, that had enough occupants like that. So we, we haven't used that. I can't say that we've used that as of yet.
What about fire code for occupancy? Is that ever utilized and through your department?
For commercial structures, not for residential.
Okay. I think that covered most of my questions on the inspections and, I mean, at least on the building code on there too. Can you talk a little bit more about all of the nuisances that you might also address that might come from having a large number of occupants? You mentioned off-street parking and trash, for example.
Any parking on the grass, trash in the yard, not putting their trash out. Trash disposal, we have a letter that we send advising them that you're supposed to put your polycarts out. All trash has to be placed inside the polycarts and you have to pull them back up to the house after, after that has, they've been emptied. Police department would handle parking on the street. And then if there are vehicles that are parked in the driveway that are blocking the sidewalk, the police department, the parking services officers would handle that. If there's an excessive amount of trash in the yard, it would be a health violation. So in those instances, we send notices to the owner and sometimes the occupants, educating them on what they're in violation of and giving them the due process to correct the violation. If they fail to, then other action would be taken, which could either be a citation or abatement action for certain types of violations, such as a health violation with trash in the yard, we would come clean it up.
What about noise? I know that's typically police department also, but.
Yeah, police department would handle noise or for parties or disturbances, the police department would handle all of that.
How about light? Light pollution, if they've had a light complaint about light?
There is nothing of that for residential areas. That's commercial.
Trying to get as many questions out as possible for us. But, yeah, I think I will pause there and see if any other commissioners have, have any other follow-up questions for our staff.
I'm seeking clarification. With the revisions, you are taking out the maximum number allowed in the policy or in the ordinance? Like it's not addressed as a maximum number, other than by square footage?
Correct.
Okay.
Are you replacing it with a square-footage verbiage?
No, that would be addressed by other codes. That would be addressed by other codes.
I just want to modify the answer a bit to say, what's being taken out is the necessity of a familial relation in the context of that number. Because of course, family related by blood never had a maximum, right? We always, but there's never been that.
Could you speak a little bit about surrounding communities? Do you see this type of ordinance in other communities around in Oklahoma or elsewhere? That makes it a familial requirement?
I'm unaware of any.
So you think that's the best of your knowledge that this might be more particular to Norman?
I would say that other cities that we have previous research that was done, I can't answer to specifics of that research, I didn't do it. But the other college towns had ordinances like this from previous years and found them difficult, if not impossible, to enforce. And have either, they're still either on the books and they're not enforcing them, or they've amended their definitions and their ordinances.
Any other questions for our staff while they're up here?
Clarified, but the language is removing the familial relations and it's also increasing the number of occupants. Is that correct? From, I keep hearing six to eight. What is that?
No, I, what I'm saying is with respect to members of the same family by blood, there never was a limit. So I didn't want to give an answer that said, we're removing the maximum because technically there, there never was a maximum when it came to a family related by blood. Do you understand?
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
We're unsure where the six to eight number is coming from.
Okay, so that's not.
That came from discussion with audiences as an example, so.
Yeah, I'd heard that multiple times before this too, so I just wanted to make sure that, so we're, we're.
So there, a group home by state statute can have up to six. They're licensed only for six occupants. So maybe that's.
So it, sorry, a lot of nuance. Group home is defined by state law. And we obviously can't change anything about that. Those numbers are going to stay the same. They've never been written into. So no, we're not adding or removing any numbers like that. And it is up to the state to follow that. We don't, and we're, we're, we're not in charge of how the state enforces that law itself, of course.
Any other questions for our staff? You might stay there just in case. Thank you so much. Moving to planning commission discussion.
I did have a neighbor who was not able to attend who asked me to read his comments. So I guess this would technically be audience comments, but I can read it during our planning commission discussion if that's acceptable.
I would think if it's part of something that's influencing your decision, I think that would be best to be put on record.
Okay. So this is from, I gotta find it.
However, just again, making the note about we ask all these audience members that came here to stay within three minutes and just being mindful of that.
Yeah, please cut me off.
Yeah, I, this is an audience comment, so.
Yes.
You as a commissioner, but maybe keeping that consideration in mind for all the audience members that stayed through this meeting or put their letter and name on record.
Yeah, and I want to clarify, these are not my remarks or opinions. But I'm just being a friendly neighbor. So this is from Steve Ladner. He lives in the 500 block of Shataqua. I'm not sure of his exact address. But he said, neighbors, please, oh wait, sorry. LaHoma, sorry, LaHoma. He lives, I know that. My name is Steve Ladner. I live in Ward Four in the 500 block of South LaHoma. We have lived on that street for over 40 years. In the span of 24 hours last week, we saw the end of our neighborhood in a historical district. The incentives for investors are too great for families to compete against unless the city listens. We attended the Shataqua Historic District Commission meeting about approving an ADU in the backyard of a neighbor. Over a dozen neighbors showed us, showed up to express their opinions that they did not want this in their neighborhood. And it was compounded by the fact that the person applying was from Dallas and they had openly said they were going to rent to sorority girls. I linked the ADUs to the discussion tonight about lifting the limit of three unrelated residents because together they will continue to convert residential property, property to rental and eliminating the long-term residents in these neighborhoods at an accelerated rate. This is the most expensive housing in Norman within three blocks of campus. The homes are selling for around $300 per square foot now. It is not the place for the ADU's low-income, too valuable, too valuable to investors. The next night, we watched the special session of the city council debate the merits of doing away with the three unrelated rule for property in Norman. Considerations for voting against lifting the three unrelated persons under one roof include, there is an endless supply of students at OU. Upon entering the SEC, enrollment is predicted to rise by another 10,000 students. The past two freshman classes are records and enrollment is up to 20% the past three years, is up 20% the past three years. This is stated in the OU Foundation Magazine. The increased enrollment continues to put pressure on the families in these neighborhoods and presents circumstances that new families cannot move in nor compete with the investors. As evidence of this trend, when the Shataqua Historic District was founded nearly 30 years ago, there were no rental houses on the 500 block of LaHoma. Over 60% are now rental properties. Only the larger homes survive, and if you lift this ban, they will, two, they too will no longer be for families, but will be rental as well, packed with students. It is unfair to the neighborhoods to tout them as historically significant and the gems of Norman and expect compliance with the extra regulations in an historic district, but not stand by them and support them as family communities, family communities. The older homes require constant upkeep and investment to maintain the standards of the historic district. The newer residents have put in hundreds of thousands of dollars to make these homes restored and beautiful. Who would want to do that if all the houses are rental and had small houses in the surrounding backyard? The amount of new traffic, noise, and parking problems will be huge. Our police and services are already taxed to unsustainable levels. It is not fair to put the onus on them to keep these neighborhoods nice and family-friendly. An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And for example, for an example of what can go wrong, after the university shut down the SAE house on campus, they ended up right across the street from us. At one time, there were close to 10 boys living in that house. Their first party took multiple police calls. Even high school kids were in attendance. To welcome themselves in the neighborhood, they yelled, screamed, and threw glass liquor bottles into the neighbors' pool. It took months and a monumental effort for the neighbors to finally get the city to issue a notice of vacation to reduce it to three students. It was miserable. The only remaining A-grade school by state standards in Norman is McKinley Elementary. This is primary area for inflow to McKinley. You will continue to reduce the opportunity, am I good on time? Are you counting?
I'm not counting because this is not public comment. This is your commission discussion. So maybe if you can summarize and wrap up as to how it relates to your decision.
So maybe we can. That's probably three minutes of public comment. Oh, there we go.
So can you summarize as to how that may be in discussion for planning commissioners and?
It was not really in summary for planning commission. It was really considered to be a public comment because he was not able to attend. So that's, I, yeah. But, but that was, that was just a, yeah, again, someone who was, wanted to make comment on this, so.
We do have a break requested. So if I kind of have a sense of if we need a lot of additional discussion on this, we'll go ahead and take the break and then come back to continue discussion. Or if we are close to finishing the item to wrap up, because we know we have other people waiting, that would be helpful for me to know. Is there other discussion intended maybe down here for this item? You know, on here?
I have some discussion. I don't know that it'll be too long, but if, I'm happy to do whatever, so.
Maybe let's go ahead and take a quick break, so, because I know it's been requested for some time. So I'm going to call a five-minute break. Is five minutes sufficient? Okay, we will return in five minutes. I'm gonna call our meeting back to order. We were in the middle of planning commission discussion on item number eleven. We will return to planning commission discussion. Commissioner Brewer, I know you had some additional comments to make, so I will turn over to you.
Um, I, uh, my comments to this, I, I, uh, despite the potential for this being enforceable, um, I have had many different discussions with city staff over the years, with different neighbors, um, with code compliance. And it is creating, uh, has created, uh, significant confusion in, in, in our neighborhood and neighborhoods surrounding us, um, because it is so hard to prove. And so I, I think it's, um, unfortunate that this ever went in place. Because it, it, again, we heard the numbers, nineteen applications three years ago, eight applications last year, one this year. And we've had one case, um, that has been, has resulted in fines to the neighbors. I, uh, I think that this is a, uh, great move to re, get rid of this ordinance. I, I think that, uh, I'm also a big believer in equity in housing, um, and we are creating, we add, we do have a, a huge affordable housing problem in this country, and we will have ten thousand new residents, as they've said, coming into, um, our, uh, in, in, into our, uh, city through additional enrollment at OU. And, um, and it's gonna be difficult for the, um, those, those students to find places that are affordable to live. And I, um, I live next door to college students. I have, uh, for years. I lived next door to six sorority girls for three years. I, I think that that's part of the choice of living next to campus. These are my neighbors. They're good, they're great people. And, uh, and I, um, I don't like, you know, conflict within the neighborhood, but this is, this ordinance creates conflict. And, um, and the given that it's unenforceable, essentially unenforceable, um, by the resources that we have, it's, uh, it, it's, it's just, it, it's just a discussion that is kind of never-ending, that there's no good result to it, in my opinion, so. So that, uh, yeah, that's where I am. And so I, I think it was, uh, a smart move by city staff to put this forward as consideration.
Thank you. Further discussion by commission?
I've kind of feel like that this is removing a mechanism to actually formally file a complaint on something. We've talked about that it's, it's unenforceable and things, and I've heard if a complaint is filed several times. Whereas we know that this is going on, but how prevalent is it, we don't know. But if they're not causing issues and neighbors aren't complaining, then, you know, no harm, no foul. But if we remove this, does that remove the mechanism for the people when things do get out of control to actually file a complaint? To have some kind of grounds to do it, to rein things back in?
So I, I think we, we just heard from city staff that there are a number of mechanisms, whether party ordinances, noise ordinances, um, parking on lawns. I mean, it's, there, there are a number of different avenues to file complaints as a neighbor. I said I've had college students living next to me. The first thing I do when a college, college students move in is I go introduce myself. I think that's the easiest way to have, uh, a friendly compliance in the neighborhood, is to get to know each other. But, uh, I've also said to college students, like, hey, you know, we've got kids. We, we, they're, if you'll just keep it in check, um, there have been two different times where I've called the cops. I not, I try not to be that person, but it's, you know, when things get out of hand, call the cops and, and those parties didn't happen again, because they're kind of on the radar at that point. So, um, there, there are ways that both complaints can be filed and these can be tracked, and the police know where the party houses are. I mean, that's just, it's just, that's part of their job. So I, I hear you, but also I, um, we just heard a long list of ways that neighbors can file complaints. And, and I would recommend that neighbors do that, if that, if that, if there are issues going on.
I want to add that I think the definition of family, um, I think has changed on the federal level and since nineteen fifty-two it was when this was put into place. The ordinance maybe not being up to date with some of those more contemporary definitions, but I employ a young professional who is not a college student. She has graduated. She lives, uh, in a four-bedroom house with two other women. She has a longtime boyfriend, and if her and the boyfriend decided to cohabitate, that would be a violation of the rule. They're also peacefully enjoying that property. They're planting bulbs. The property owner is very much gonna be able to appreciate long-term. Not every, um, and those people probably are not even hitting the radar, but would that maybe prevent them from continuing to occupy that type of house and then have to try to seek out apartments and not be able to be in those, those houses or having to do those other things? I think there is an opportunity for this to be a deterrent. I think that was, um, some of what Commissioner Parker was also getting to, and a mechanism for making complaints. But I think there could be some more thoughtful ways of doing that and addressing these problems. And maybe this isn't the ordinance as the way to do it without also taking away options and reasonable ways for people to do that. So, um, I'd like our young professionals to be able to stay and live in an economic means with the housing costs being what they are. They aren't forty years ago. These people probably could have bought their own homes, and they absolutely cannot buy the same house today with the state of the economy. And, um, housing affordability isn't just for students. It's also for a huge variety of people that maybe didn't get into that opportunity. And it's easy to be on the other side as a homeowner and forget what it was like on that side. So I do think finding some ways that people can find affordable ways to live is important. And this is a way that allows for some affordability, well, without breaking the law. But, you know, these complaints and these concerns, the cars, all of that is also a problem. So I do think that there are some ways that those can be addressed, but I don't know that familial living relationships is the way to address it. So because of that, because this ordinance is specifically addressing familial living arrangements, I am in support of this ordinance change. But I am not in support of neighbors having these continued problems and not having means to be able to address them. And I would encourage us to find some ways with code compliance to find equitable ways that are enforceable, some other options out there, because we are not the only college town and we're not the only community that faces these issues. And finding other ways, whether it is cars, parking, occupancy, ways that we have rights to be able to actually make a difference, as it sounds like this ordinance wasn't necessarily able to impact in the way that we would have hoped. That's my comment on that.
If there's no other discussion on this motion, I would, or I'm sorry, not motion, uh, discussion on this item, I would take a motion.
I'll second.
And is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I would take a vote.
You may vote. All votes have been cast and it carries six to one.
Moving to items number twelve and thirteen. Item number twelve, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance O dash two-five-two-six dash eighteen in ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending section thirty-six dash two-oh-one of the Code of the City of Norman so as to remove a part of the south half of section nine Township Eight North, range two west of Norman, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, from the A-two Rural Agricultural District and place the same in the C-two General Commercial District of said city and providing for the separability thereof, thirty-four-hundred Classen Boulevard, Ward Seven. And item number thirteen, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of P-P dash two-five-two-six dash ten, consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by Greatest Hopes LLC, Golden Land Surveying for thirty-four-hundred Classen Boulevard for one point four-eight acres, a property located at thirty-four-hundred Classen Boulevard, Ward Seven. On both of these items, the applicant requests postponement to the December eleventh, twenty-twenty-five Planning Commission meeting. Again, that is the December eleventh, twenty-twenty-five Planning Commission meeting. I would take a motion on this.
To postpone items twelve and thirteen to the December eleventh, twenty-twenty-five Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
And if no discussion on the motion, I would take a vote.
You may vote. All votes have been cast and it carries seven to zero.
Moving to item number fourteen, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance O dash two-five-two-six dash thirteen in ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending section thirty-six dash two-oh-one of the Code of the City of Norman so as to grant special use for a sorority house in the R-three multifamily dwelling district for the northeast quarter of section six Township Eight North, range two west of the Indian Meridian, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, and providing for the separability thereof, fourteen-oh-one College Avenue, Ward Seven. The applicant requests postponement to the December eleventh, twenty-twenty-five Planning Commission meeting, December eleventh, twenty-twenty-five. I would take a motion on this one.
Move to postpone item fourteen to the December eleven, twenty-twenty-five Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
And a vote?
You may vote. Cast and it carries seven to zero.
Moving to miscellaneous discussion, does staff have any information for the commission? Do commissioners have any comments to make? Is there anything else to come before the commission? I believe we had a miscellaneous comment marked on the agenda item. As a point of order, is there miscellaneous comments? I've not had anybody ask for miscellaneous in planning commission, so it is a first for us. So sorry, our city attorney representative has stepped out. Just one moment. Technically on the agenda, it's miscellaneous comments of planning commission and staff, but uh, we had, uh, parties who wish to make miscellaneous comment in our miscellaneous section, audience members. We've not had that request before. Our agenda reads miscellaneous comments of planning commission and staff. Would we be able to take miscellaneous comments from audience?
I think so, yes. If it pleases the chair, however, I would, um, just, a, as any miscellaneous needs to be, it really is important that it state comment and not discussion or furthering a discussion of something that's not on the agenda. Uh, if someone wishes to state something on the record and you as the chair wish to allow it, you can.
So on that comment, we would not be able to discuss any of the items, any of the matters that have already come before commission. Again, this would need to be addressed to the commission as a whole, but I would allow additional public comment. I limit the time, but I do, I am in favor of allowing the comment to speak, so. Just go ahead and state your name and address one more time for the record. Same thing if you want the thirty-second warning, I'll give that to you.
Yes, I do want the thirty-second warning, yes. Carlin de Gravel, Ward four-oh. Four-ten North Ponca, different panel. I just wanna make a comment about the planning commission and what you do. And we're grateful for what you guys do. You don't see us here as often as you do at city council, but, um, we have had opportunity to share what our planning commission does. We have, I know there's a stigma associated, but we appreciate all the code enforcement. The citizens do. We appreciate all of the planning and everything that goes into planning our city. As we do become more familiar with, um, code, reporting violations, staying in close communication with our neighbors and being friendly, um, you know, we look forward to encouraging the public to reach out to you. I will make a comment in regards to, um, for example, right now, we are working with Saint Joseph's because of the nature of their facility, but we have a code enforcement against public camping. So, um, I know that law enforcement is involved in trying to aid in that situation over by Longfellow, as well as the neighbors in the neighborhood. We understand the nature of that property and who their audience is that they're serving. We also understand the children in the area. And so Norman has a great code, um, just to help us all coexist. And I do wanna, do wanna send some kudos out to you guys for, for keeping us going and keeping us on track. And, um, yeah, just appreciate all your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. I did have one other similar, uh, Sherilyn Denso, you had the miscellaneous comment also listed. So same thing, just in the general nature and not on the particular items. And if you want the thirty-second warning, let me know, and a reminder to state your name and address again.
I'll be brief. Sherilyn Denso, twenty-nine, twenty-five Redwood Drive, Redwood Drive, sorry. My one comment would be that, um, you guys are our line of defense in our neighborhoods and our community. All we have are the laws that we have to live by, okay? And, um, so you guys pretty much direct those laws. And, um, enforceable or not, you know, we have to have something to go by, some rules to go by, okay? And, uh, I understand that, you know, life changes and things are fluid, um, particularly in the economy. However, um, there are certain things that, um, can become a slippery slope. And once you start down that direction, um, and you're on the edge of that cliff, it's very easily to go over and find yourselves, um, with, in a situation where you've created slums instead of beautiful communities. So I want you to be very mindful and very forward-thinking about what, every single step of the way. Um, and, and that I would really appreciate, because I've seen the slippery slope. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's nothing else to come before the commission, I would declare the meeting.